All right, everyone, I will call the Tuesday, September sixteenth Select Board Meeting to order. Tonight's meeting is being recorded by RCTV and broadcast on Zoom. And starting on the first, we will go with the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every and every justice. All right, I will go over the agenda.
Hi, you guys are still muted.
So once again, we're being broadcast on RCTV and recorded on Zoom. We just did the Pledge of Allegiance. So overview of the meeting, seven oh five, public comment, items not included on the agenda. Seven fifteen, Town Manager Report, seven twenty, Community Spotlight, seven twenty-five, Discuss Potential Override Budget Review Valet Parking Fees. Seven forty, Update and Discussion on Trash and Securing Contract. Seven fifty-five, Discussion and Vote on Three-Month Extension of RCTV License Agreement. Eight ten, Discuss and Vote on New Annual All-Alcohol Restaurant Liquor License for Champion Golf, the ANK DBA Champion Indoor Golf located at One General Way. Discuss and Vote on a Transfer of an Annual All-Alcohol Liquor License for Yitauin DBA Hoi's Restaurant and Bar located at Twenty-Six Park, Walker's Drive. Public Information at eight thirty, Public Information Session Two, Review the Charter Changes in Preparation for Town Meeting, Including Potential Discussion and Vote to amend the Town Manager Removal and Town Manager Resignation Sections. Not applicable to Matt currently. Nine o'clock, Potential Indication of the Rule of Necessity Under the Conflict of Interest Law to Allow Board Actional on Warrant and Snow Removal Bylaw Article. Nine ten, Vote to Close the Warrant for Subjective Meeting. Nine twenty-five, Discuss and Vote to Authorize Town to Participate in Settlement of National Opioid Litigations with Purdue Sacklers and Secondary Opioid Manufacturers. Nine thirty-five, Discuss a Lease Amendment and Memorandum of Understanding Regarding Parking for the Reading Center for Active Living, Recal and Pickleball Courts with Reading ICE Authority and authorize a Select Board Member to engage in negotiations on behalf of the Board. Nine forty-five, Brief Update on Status of Montessori in Mulberry School. Nine fifty, Select Board Liaison Updates. Ten o'clock, Future Agendas. Ten oh five, Approve Meeting Minutes from September ninth, two thousand twenty-five. And first, Matt is Mary on my chance or no?
I don't see her. We could ask if she's there. Mary from the Mulberry School, are you on the Zoom yet?
Not yet.
All right, so we'll move on to Public Comment. Please take more than two minutes. We're gonna play some fancy music. Name and address. Angela.
Angela, been to Ten Orchard Park Drive. I'm unable to stay for the meeting later. I don't know if I'll be able to get on Zoom. So I'm actually speaking on nine thirty-five. Agenda item, Discuss a Lease Amendment and Memorandum of Understanding Regarding Parking for Recal and Pickleball Courts with Reading ICE Authority. We need to be very clear here. Recal does not need additional parking. It has sufficient parking. It is the pickleball courts that have no parking, zero parking, and they need about twenty spaces. I'm very concerned that recalc parking and recalc visitors, primarily senior citizens, will lose out in order to trade parking use with Burbank for pickleball parking. It's unfortunate the town did not foresee this problem, did not provide parking as part of the pickleball project. You'll be deciding a Select Board Member to represent the Select Board of Contract Negotiations, and I believe that members, Select Board Members Karen Herrick and Karen Rose Gillis are the only valid options to represent the interests of the town objectively. Karen Herrick, I believe, is a liaison to Burbank and Willverse in the contract. Karen Rose Gillis should be afforded this opportunity. Also, she's demonstrated interest and willingness to participate as a new Select Board Member. Mr. Bachi, with whom I served for, I think, a year and a half on the Simonsway Executive, Simonsway Explorer Tour Committee, should not serve, considering his time on SWAC as Chair, where he continually promoted his interest as a pickleball player and instructor, and it was acknowledged not just by me, but a majority of the committee members. I don't believe he can operate in an objective manner, you know, if, to negotiate the contract. Mr. Haley's demonstrated that he does not fully understand or care about the contract and the relationship between the ICE Authority and the town. In his comments at a FinCom meeting, where he stated that Burbank rent money was Burbank's money to side his rent, and very recently implied that he did not care if funds owed to the town by the arena, and he did not care about violating the contract. Mrs. Murphy is currently working with the town to negotiate the RCTV contract. So I do hope that Ms. Herrick or Ms. Rose Gillis is able to work with the town staff on the amendments to the lease regarding parking for pickleball courts. I believe they're the most objective people to go forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. We need to get Adam from the MBTA. He ran a very well public comment. Eliminating people is always two minutes. Anybody else in the room? I don't know your name, but name and address, please.
My name is Joseph White.
Yep.
My name is Joseph White. I live at sixty-five Prescott Street. I again would like to encourage the board to renew the contract for RCTV. I think they've done a lot of good for this town, and I think that this is, this really shouldn't have been a longtracted argument. They've done a lot of good. They continue to do a lot of good, and many people have been trained by them in this town. And I think that they do a good job doing the recording of these meetings, other meetings, and that they should be, their contracts should be renewed. So that's pretty much all I wanted to say. I've talked with numerous other people who also believe that RCTV should be, their contracts should be renewed. So I just wanted to convey that to the board and encourage the board to renew their contract. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Nancy. Name and address, please.
Nancy Doctor, Pearl Street. This is regarding, I guess, both contracts for Burbank and RCTV. In the agenda, you talked about having a liaison assigned to RCTV to be part of the executive director annual review. So I'm assuming that's gonna be written in also to Burbank, and you'll be doing that for the four directors and Dennis Hughes? Is that correct? Because you can't single out one agency and not the other. I'd like the board to be consistent. So I'd like that to be in the contract as well for Burbank, that you will assign a liaison, and you'll be reviewing their executive director on an annual basis. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Anyone else in the room? Maddie, anyone online?
Not seeing any hands online.
Mary isn't back, by chance, Matt?
I don't see her.
All right, so we'll bring it up during the nine forty-five section, and that'll be that.
Yep, sounds good.
Point of information, who requested this agenda item? Was it? Who requested this agenda item?
The which? The update on the Montessori Mulberry School? I set the agenda. So I made the request, just like every single other item that's on the agenda.
So you asked the Director of the Mulberry School to come in here on a command performance?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so she doesn't need to be here?
She doesn't need to be. She said that she was going to be, and then I, she said that she could only do it during public comment because she's having health issues and can't stay late. So I'm being amendable to what she requested.
To be clear, I think staff could give us an update on the situation, and there's no need for anyone related to this supposed to be here.
Staff update section, Karen. It's already been discussed behind the scenes, and I was being accommodating to her if she wanted to. Otherwise, we're gonna bring it up at nine forty-five. That's, listen.
Just being clear, you've requested this agenda item.
I am.
You demanded that she show up.
I did not demand that she showed up.
Because there's no reason for her to be here tonight.
You are correct. As of an hour and a half ago, you are correct. Prior to that, you were incorrect.
No.
Yes, you were. Okay, well, we will move on then to the Town Manager Report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. A few updates on some things going on in Reading. First of all, importantly, tomorrow, the Reading Coalition's Time to Gather, which is an event that will remember those that we lost to suicide and substance misuse, is happening from five thirty to seven thirty outside Town Hall. Many of you might have noticed the exhibit is already up, the flags, the posters. That's some preference for the event tomorrow. There's also gonna be music and a candlelight vigil. And also, I have the honor of presenting the first-ever Reading Poetry Prize to the winning student tomorrow night, which I'm very excited about. So I hope everybody could gather outside Town Hall tomorrow night for that very moving event. The MBTA turned back track, so many of you know they had these two public meetings, one with the Direct the Butters and one just last night with the general public. So I attended that in person. That was informative. They had, they had answers to some questions. They had studies and whatnot. We had asked them, I think, over the summer to come back to a Select Board Meeting before they filed the notice of intent. I believe they agreed to that. They didn't mention that last night, so we've reached out to them to see if that is still the case. We want that to be the case, because I'm sure we'll have questions about mitigation and whatnot directly from the Board. So after that, they said last night they want to file a notice of intent, which goes to conservation. When they do that, that will trigger a series of public meetings, just like we did last year. And I'll let everybody know as soon as I hear that that's coming, so nobody's surprised by that. Last year, they didn't tell us. This year, I've insisted that they do tell us. It's a quick update there. The snow shoveling bylaw, which is on the warrant tonight, I mentioned this last time, but appears to be mentioning again. The bylaw committee is regulating the proposed snow shoveling bylaw for the downtown area to be debated at town meeting. They've scheduled two public forums. Unfortunately, one is a Zoom-only forum that's taking place right now, tonight at seven thirty. It was just that with all the scrambling and to avoid the holidays, there was only so many nights they could do it. So that's gonna be, that's tonight and not Zoom-only. But there is still a live event at the library that's scheduled for the twenty-fourth at seven thirty, live at the library, where the bylaw committee will be there, presenting the same information and asking questions. So there's links to all this information on the town website, but I just wanted to mention that because I know there's been a growing interest in that bylaw. I mentioned this before, but the Finance Committee is scheduled, Financial Forum to kick off budget season. That forum will take place October eighth at seven PM at the library. That's when they'll discuss free cash usage, give me some direction, and the department head's direction on how much we can use for the budget, what they would like to see parameters. They'll take input from obviously the Select Board and the public at large as well. So that will really kick off our budget season. We've been preparing for that. I've been meeting with the school department and department heads to prepare for that meeting. And also, I had the pleasure of attending the swearing-in ceremony yesterday for our newest police officer. So congratulations to Officer Zachary Castiglione. He comes from a police department up in New Hampshire, but is actually a Reading High graduate, which is good to see somebody staying in the community here that went to Reading High. He holds a BS from UNAS Vol, and I would like to officially welcome him to Reading. I think he's gonna be a great addition. And one note, I see Laura Jim is in the audience today. Today's actually her birthday, and she's here with the Select Board, so happy birthday, Laura.
Oh, yeah, happy birthday, Laura.
Okay, then that's the report.
Jane, you have anything?
In the interest of time, I'll save my comments later, but we're moving right along on a million different projects and things in my department. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, seven twenty, Community Spotlight.
Okay. Back to me, and I do have a volunteer spotlight for tonight. So tonight, I'd like to thank and shine a light on a volunteer. His name is Randolph Kazazian, but he's better and affectionately known as Biff the Lamp Man at the Pleasant Street Center. Biff has been donating his lamp repair services to people in Reading at the Senior Center, Reading Seniors, for many years. He charges only for the parts, not the labor. It's really a labor of love for him. He sees this as a way of giving back to the community and enhancing community spirit, which I wholeheartedly agree. That's a great way to do that. I understand that our own Nancy Doctor, who's in the audience tonight, had the honor of being his five-hundredth customer recently. So good for Nancy. That was quite a, something to behold, a piece of history. So that's a lot of lamps, five hundred lamps. So on behalf of the town, I'd like to thank Biff the Lamp Man for all that he does for our senior community and keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. All right, seven twenty-five, Discuss Potential Override Budget Review Parking Valet Fees. Page five of the packet. I guess Lieutenant Jones, you'll be presenting instead of?
I'll have anything presented. Just in case you have any questions on the Chiefs, Chiefs letter. The Chiefs are at the training conference for the week, so.
So I went over this. I'll just give a little background real quick with regarding this. I went over it with Matt, Jane, and Avery, the whole scenario. Essentially, what, you know, not everything that we come up with to raise money in town is gonna be home runs. Nothing is gonna be, you know, like last week was obviously a ton of money with the ambulance private fees. This is miniscule kind of money in the grand scheme of things. But, you know, it's good to see things in writing here from the police, you know, that they don't support the idea of having valet fees. While, you know, at the same time, I disagree to a, to a point on this, only because I know Haven Street at nighttime, if we went down there now, two spots over there is fine. But the understanding with that is we have to open it up to the town for valet services. We can't just pigeonhole that we only want this particular street to do it. But we can impose our own kind of rules and regulations, how we would want to set up a license agreement with that. So, you know, obviously, we have the board, obviously, we have the police's memorandum here in the packet. So I just wanted to put it up for the rest of the board to see how they felt on this, if they thought it was a good idea, wrong time, because it's not just my opinion. So that's kind of, and I can somewhat answer some Max's questions, how we could do it instead. Obviously, open it up to everybody. Venetia Moon might want it, Zucka, Von Raddies. And I understand the slippery slope that's written in here, that now we're adding more and more on. But we can structure a license agreement that puts all of the liability on the person that we would be issuing the valet permits to. So towing or, you know, upkeep of the spots, they would have to have a parking plan in place where the vehicles are going, not using our land for it, no parking at either one of the lots that we have. So they have to have that agreement in place. And I think that while minimal, it will bring a bit more traffic to the downtown. I don't think this is Boston-like atmosphere, where it's gonna obviously be like hinging upon lots of people that go there only because of this, for valet, anyway. But it's food, and for the meals, tax, and everything else involved with that, it is more income beyond just a valet parking spot income, in my mind. But with that, I will open up to the board, and, you know, that's where we're at. So for that, I was having, in full transparency, I was having dinner at Post maybe three, four months ago-ish. And Jason brought it up, that he was in talks with Kevin, I think, at Town Hall, Economic Development Director. And the police kind of didn't want it or whatever, and I was like, I mean, I don't see a problem with it. Now we have two pages of why there's a problem with it, but at first, cursory glance, I did not see the issue when I thought of it, of another way to raise mons, funds for the town. So that's, that's kind of how it happened. It was in the works before I even got wind of it, but I just, you know.
So is he complaining that there's not enough parking for his?
No, he just thinks that valet would bring more people to his business, and he'd be able to either lease out Eastern Bank or something for the cars to park at and that kind of stuff. Was offered as a service.
No, I understand what it is. I just, I think we're very familiar with Reading in its parking issues. And I completely agree with the police department. I think we're opening a can of worms that we will never be able to satisfy or close with all the businesses that could be potentially coming downtown, that their needs, you know, you can't put one over the other. I just don't think it's, I can't, I want to open.
No, I, I agree with you, but like I said, the tipping point for me on this is, I know Haven Street, if we went down there right now, it's a semi goes down, other than over near Post, because they're driving traffic to that section. And then obviously during, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Main Street is slammed, as you know. If this was during the day, absolutely not. Like, I've already been on the record for that. There's not enough parking. It's been beaten to death. But for nighttime, I figured, why not leverage the opportunity to make some money of a couple parking spots that we have on the street, not in our lots, and kind of leverage that? And if a couple people joined on, it's income we didn't have before.
Is it, you're gonna laugh when I say this.
I won't.
You will. So why can't we put the kiosk activated at night and have them use the pay-for-parking spaces behind, in the old, you know, Atlantic Parking Lot?
I would caution against me and you specifically talking about anything within a hundred feet of that area. So I would leave that.
So as long as we're not, we're still on the agenda item.
Oh, we are.
We're in a public meeting.
I will not be discussing anything within a hundred feet of my office, which happens to coincide with what Karen just mentioned.
So how do we talk about the parking lot?
Well, we can. I'm just saying, I say parking lots in general, none of our municipal lots would be used for valet services. That's what I said, that, that none of those spots would be used. Doesn't matter where it is, in general.
Okay, so I guess I'll throw it there for another discussion someday, that perhaps that's a direction we may want to go into, and then we can stop the discussion.
Behind CBS? Absolutely, Karen.
We can talk about that.
We can.
But.
But I, I just want to get the general board's overall feel of this. Is it a good idea? It sounds like you don't think so, so, you know, it is what it is. Karen or Carla?
Sure, I'll go. Thank you. Thank you also to Chief Clark for taking the time to look into this, and yourself coming tonight and having to write this memo. And that's a great idea. We already invested in this equipment, in the software, in the training, and thank you for bringing that up. So I'm gonna defer to Reading Police on this topic and say that this, I don't see this as a high priority.
Carla?
All right, my knee-jerk reaction was no. And then I thought about it more, and having been in the restaurant business to this level, parking is paramount for a lot of your customers. We all know that after five PM, they're the main driver of parking on Haven Street. So I, I don't see it in here, but is there a number of spaces that Jason wanted?
It would be, we can do up to two. It's whatever the Board and then, you know, whatever police, et cetera, would go on beyond that. But it, it looks like it's typically one to two is the maximum.
Yeah, I could argue both sides in this. Agreeing with police and then, you know, giving Post props for trying to do better for his restaurant, which will turn, hopefully, to potentially higher revenue, higher real stacks for us. But if it was anywhere else, and yes, do it for one, do it for all. You know, Main Street is a whole another can of worms. Obviously, it's gonna be a fee. There's gonna have to be an additional fee to park cars somewhere. So how many people would actually take advantage of this? I have an answer to that. Obviously, Jason is putting himself out there requesting this. No one else has. And if we do some kind of regulation, then yes, it's open to all the other restaurants in town. But in this particular area, you know, obviously, we have two members who are against it. One of us is not here. I could argue both sides. Nice discussion. But I can see the merits of this in this particular location. Other locations, there's a lot of different issues with them, but, you know, Venetia Moon has the benefit of this at night. The cobblestone and the lot on the weekends. We don't have meetings on the weekend. So there we have that added benefit. That's good for them. That's great. It works out. I'm happy for that. Post is too busy next to Friday and Saturday. If we limit the valet to the weekend nights, not seven days a week, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't do valet. I'm cheap, like trying to find free parking wherever I go. But as far as, I think that's another option, limit to Friday and Saturday night, the two busiest nights. And I think there's a way that this can work, but obviously, you know, would have to, three of us would have to agree to it. So those are my thoughts.
If I could follow up real quick, I didn't think of the Friday, Saturday scenario, and probably Avery without asking, I would say that we can do whatever we want. We have to open it up to everybody on Friday and Saturday. But I could see where limiting it would, you know, kind of limit our exposure to it. And then, while you were talking, I realized that we can't do enforcement after five anyway. So even if we wanted to hypothetically turn CBS's parking kiosk on, after five, we cannot enforce it because the regulations for the entire town end at five. So I understand we'd have to change stuff and do all this, the other things, but the police aren't writing tickets after five o'clock. They don't even want to do two valet spots, so. Because obviously, you have more important stuff to do than, you know, deal with valet parking spots. You know what I mean? So, and that is one hundred percent warranted as well. So, I don't know, I guess, you know, it's never good having four people, but I guess we can just explore. Maybe I'll broach the subject maybe of a weekend-only kind of thing, Friday, Saturday, or Matt or Kevin can reach out to Jason at Post and just see if, if that's something that's amendable to, to kind of make it, you know what I mean? Just something like that, just.
A little bit less impactful.
Less impactful, a little less, and, you know, it's the weekend kind of thing, so.
Okay.
But Lieutenant Jones, you don't, so. Did you have something, Karen?
Kind of. So is he, is he just trying to provide it as a service to his customers?
Yes.
Because there's no reason his customers can't park in the Atlantic Parking Lot.
Okay, it's just.
The space is probably in front that they would take a car and go park it somewhere.
Yes.
No reason, or is there a reason why he couldn't just not offer a pseudo valet where you go get the car and park it in the parking lot?
Probably some liability. You sound like you want to loophole things like I do.
No, no, I just, I, I don't.
Yeah, no, I hear you.
They take your car. I have no idea where they take it. So, okay.
I think there's probably some regulation that we can't do that, if I had to guess. But no, nothing prevents someone from over there. But as you know, people don't want to walk two feet. If they want to park up front.
So you're right in the middle. The distance is about the same.
We know this, but that's not everybody. So Lieutenant Jones, so you're, so obviously, you guys don't want to enforce this kind of stuff. You have criminals to catch.
We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have any enforcement. We wouldn't have anything to do with this enforcement-wise. It's just about opening a can of worms, changing the traffic rules and regulations of the downtown. There's dozens of businesses. Each one has their own opinions on parking. They all have their own wants and needs. So when the park committee, that was back during COVID, the changes came in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. It was the most fair way to encompass the entire downtown area. And then giving one business a preferential treatment, where now, like you said, other restaurants, we're gonna be given more spaces away, and they're gonna have to find more dedicated parking spaces for valet parking areas that, whereas the police have the discretion to take it somewhere who's in an incorrect, incorrect place. The valet stand would either be looking to tow the car, because that's their own remedy. So if someone stays on Haven Street where they want to hold their valet stand, and that person either missed the sign or didn't realize they were there and had parked in the spot for valet stands, the only remedy is for the restaurant to tow their vehicle. It's not like the police can go down there, run their plate, find out who it is, give them a heads up, and at most, they get a twenty-five dollar ticket. They're getting at least a hundred dollar tow. They're getting at least a hundred dollar tow plus the inconvenience of of their car missing. Because they stay in the valet stand spot.
All right, understood. Um, so Matt, if you just want to follow Jason and Kevin and. Just provide the feedback that that you heard tonight where, you know, obviously the police have have these concerns. Is this something that he still wants to go ahead with? And then like it's not specifically him. It would be open up, yes, to. Everybody else in the town. Um, but you have to have plans in place and that is what would limit people from just snagging every spot over on. On on Main Street. You have to have a parking plan and X Y Z amount of spots in the lease agreement with somebody else like. There's lots of checks and balances to prevent, um, I don't want to say fraud, but someone abusing. That kind of option, which is follow ups here to do.
Yep. I just wanna. I don't think it's fair to call it preferential treatment just because Post is the first one. He's advocating for himself, just like any other business has the right to do. So. I joined this board five years ago to advocate for small businesses. I'm not saying this is the right solution, but I don't want to have the universe as preferential treatment. Post is thinking to enhance his business. And this is an idea that he has that he wants us to consider. If we if we don't do it, we don't do it. If we do it, I think Friday and Saturday makes sense for me. And, you know, let's pick Zuka, for example, real quick. Where is Zuka gonna get a shared parking agreement with another private lot? That's close enough and safe enough for the valley drivers to go back and forth. Is that gonna be worth the expense and effort for Zuka as an example? Right? So. I commend Jason for opening up that restaurant, taking a big risk, cluster crazy. And he seems to be doing well. And he's just trying a different way to enhance his business and that's it. I must say I agree with this 100%. I disagree with this 100%, but I think it's worth a look. And we we put it to the vote. I don't want to burden the police, but if police don't have any jurisdiction on two spots. Then it's up to the business to take care of those two spots. And that alleviates us. So it's just something to consider.
I forget the context where I said preferential treatment, but.
I think it was COVID related.
But it was mostly getting at us. When we have pre-construction meetings with other businesses and um coming to downtown. They are also requesting for separate parking regulations and we tell them. Sorry, these are the regulations in place. So it's not like we're giving one separate treatment versus the other.
Yeah, I don't want to put words in your mouth. That's right.
Right. I just wanted to clear that up.
No, no, I'm fine.
We follow what the regulations are downtown. Everybody has a separate opinion on what and separate needs on what they have for their business.
Just like you wrote in the they wrote the memo. Yeah, 15 minute, half hour. No, I totally get it.
You know, I I agree with you. It's the same thing outside of. Where is it? Mathnasium and um Delsar, they wanted 30 minutes and extra. And I know they came in here before and it's like, you know. You obviously take your recommendations. You've been doing it forever and you see the ebbs and flows and all of that. It this is just. I think uh just an add on to something and it alleviates you and now it's just. It's an unfair everyone else kind of scenario. Um, and it is what it is, but I guess we'll we'll just follow up on this and. And then you may or may not have another meeting regarding it. But obviously, you'd be kept in. Anyone from the public, questions, comments? Nancy?
Tony go first.
Tony go first. Two minutes and just an FYI, police and anyone else doesn't have to respond, but if they want to, so be it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Tony DeRosa, 130 John Street. Uh, looking at the site for Post. There is 25 parking spaces to the left that they actually, well, are part of the development. I don't know why the um valet parking could not start there. And then if they have an agreement with um Eastern Bank or whomever, move the cards across. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. If you can add that to the list, please. Just find out if they've asked that before. All right, all right. Well, now we will get. An answer in real time.
So they have seventy. Uh, I believe they have 70 parking spaces. But it's all dedicated to the residents at at the Post. There's no.
So Host itself has zero markings.
Correct, because it's within 300 feet of public parking, they are exempt from having any kind of. On-site parking.
Correct, but they so they. They built that entire development and ascribed zero spots to that, but everybody else in the whole building got one and a half or two, whatever the ratio is.
I believe they're required 1.25. They have 1.4.
All right.
Spaces per per unit in there.
Okay. Thanks, Nancy.
Nancy Dr. Pearl Street. Two things. One, I'd be very concerned if this board ruled against something that the police department is not supporting. I'd be very concerned about that. Um, the other thing is when this restaurant came into town. They knew the limitations of the parking. They knew where the public parking was. This isn't something that just happened. This is something that they've been aware of and I also would be very reluctant. Given my comments earlier, not to be consistent in our policies, whatever this board decides. It has to be consistent for everyone and this does open up a can of worms. I caution you against doing that.
Thanks, Matt. Anyone on Zoom, Maddie?
Not seeing any hands on Zoom.
Okey dokey. So we'll put a pin in that and we'll see if it gets revisited in the future.
Okay.
Uh, right. Fun Time, 7:40. Update and discussion on trash and recycling contract, page seven in the packet. So if you could just bring that up, Maddie, um, starting on page seven, I know it's like 100 pages, but.
Yeah.
And, you know, mostly, if I may. Yes. So um, I did provide a memo to, because I know it's a lot of pages, uh, with an executive summary and whatnot to. Let the board know what's been going on. It's been a 14 month process. Um, going through procurement and going, uh, having a lot of engagement meetings and whatnot. Um, that's all outlined in the memo. Um, Jane has worked on it quite a bit, as has Chris Cole, who's here tonight. And I believe Mike Kessman, our Assistant DPW Director, is in on the Zoom. Um, so. I I'm gonna give a few high level things and then we can turn it over to them to flesh it out more. We're all available to answer questions. We're not asking for a vote tonight. The vote won't come till October, but this is a lot to digest. So I wanted to give it to you early. You can read the memo, read the packet. Um, it's no secret because it's already been on the front page of the paper that we're recommending waste management as the new provider. Um, for several reasons, a lot of them are outlined in the memo, but for both technical specifications and pricing. Um, they seem to have the best uh the best proposal. I and there may actually be somebody from Waste Management here tonight. I'm not sure.
Christine DeRosa.
Christine DeRosa from Waste Management is here in the audience as well tonight. Um, so we can go through some of the particulars. One thing I did want to highlight, and this shouldn't be a surprise to people because we were talking about this all along. We rolled up through bins is that we're recommending a switch to bi-weekly recycling instead of weekly. Um, it's a big cost saver to us and that's really one of the reasons why we rolled out the um. The bins at the sizing that we rolled them out, the larger bins for recycling, because we anticipated this. A lot of the market forces were driving this way. So that's going to be one big change, but I think in terms of other changes, there's going to be some. Some great additions in terms of apps, communication, education. A lot of the detailed transition plan because to transition is no no easy feat. You know, we wanted to make sure that was in there as well. So I can allow Jane and and Chris go into some of the details and we can all answer the questions, but those are sort of the. The highlights, the pricing, the recycling, the schedule that we followed is in there as well. Um, it was an exhaustive process. We felt it was a very good process. I have the scoring in there and not not just the proposals, but the scoring that our team. Put together to show you what the scores are. Uh, so I will um turn it over to Jane and Chris. If you can come up to the microphone as well. To add a little more color and answer questions, that would be great if that's okay with the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to, in addition to Chris Cole and Mr. Kessman, who participated heavily in this process, were key individuals. Also included Katie Gabriella, our Director of Operations, and Josh Shalone, who is our Executive Assistant in Operations, are both are MCPPO certified. Um, so I wanted to to give a shout out to them. They were also key personnel in contributing to this work. We conducted an RFP process, as you know, to find the most advantageous uh mix uh for us going forward and. We first opened up the technical proposals before we looked at the price proposals. And as we rated and ranked all of them, um, there was strong consensus across all individuals that. Waste management was preferred. When we did the rating and ranking, um, we also invited Matt and Sharon to join those conversations. So Waste Management was our first choice quality wise, which concerned us when we were going to go open the price proposals and be like, oh, they would be the most expensive. So it turned out they were also the the lowest price um comparatively. So um it's a complicated process. We gave them a very complicated price sheet to work with. We um also engaged them afterward. When you go through your documents, and you probably already have, I'm sure. But just for the public who who might be watching at home, after the memo.
Sorry about that note.
I don't know what that was. Um, so we include. All of the engagement activities that we undertook as a team um. Throughout the whole process, particularly regarding the rollout of carts, because they go hand in hand. Um, we also did something called a recycling audit, and this is a fundamental difference from the way. Uh, solid waste has been managed and recycling has been managed in the past. In the past, it's been. A much lower cost. I think in our current contract, we're spending $400 to $2,000 budgeted for recycling. Those costs are going up. So what towns are doing is this thing called a blended value, where we analyze through a recycling audit. What the community is throwing away, what the community is recycling, rather, and that is a process where the truck goes to. Um, a municipal recycling facility, drops all the contents on the ground and hand. Reviews everything in the recycling of that truck. And Mr. Kessman went to observe every single instance for this time. So the audit spells it out and. The bottom line information is that we have, in Reading is, you may already know, quite tremendous at how we recycle. And we have a valuable blended value. Paper and cardboard have higher value on the commodity markets than glass, believe it or not, and tin. So. Municipalities now pay attention to these prices and we work very hard to achieve a good. Uh, pricing from the vendors who provided proposals so that we would have a more advantageous um look at. What our recycling would be. We did this audit in the spring, so it wasn't around. A particular holiday season that might have a lot of packaging that's being recycled. This is what our typical mix is. We didn't notify residents that would have a more advantageous, please recycle this stuff this week. It wasn't a situation like that. So. This helped us a lot. Um, you will see in your packet the initial quote that we received from, in this case, Waste Management. And then what they came back with when we asked them to look at blended value. Um, so you can see that 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 was advantageous to us and we appreciate. Um, that Waste Management did do that. So um. That's that's all in your packet. You can read all about how recycling works and blended value and it's all there. This is a summary report, believe it or not. There's a longer one. We also put in the um the RFP, our instructions to our proposers, the evaluation criteria. The worksheet that's done when it's when each proposal is evaluated. Um, and we also put in a link to all of the um. All of the proposals and in your packet is the full proposal from Waste Management, which you can you can go through. So that's kind of the process that we undertook. This is the information. There's a lot of detail here because we required a lot of detail from all of these. Proposers and we we left it somewhat open open ended. How are you going to address education in the community? How are you going to address transition? How are you going to address um issues? One of the things that we put in was that we required that they either have a a service request. Service system or they use our C Click Fix system. So one thing that we found interesting with Waste Management is they have an app that they use. Other things that they do, uh, they will have, they have cameras on their trucks that will show if a if a trash bin is out. When they show up to pick it up. Because sometimes we get calls from people who didn't get their their bins picked up, but sometimes they weren't they weren't out. Um, they also have a camera that looks in the truck to see if there is contamination of what's being put into the truck. And so they can answer questions directly also to the residents. You can contact them directly. And there's there's quite a bit more. So I don't, Chris, is there anything you want to add on to that?
I don't think so. I mean, that was it in a nutshell, you know, as I um, I'll also be back on your October 7th, maybe give a more detailed presentation with a lot of the. More finer details of all the proposals.
Yeah, and um what this turns out financially from a bottom line perspective, which will be more in the presentation, but we want to give you. We're looking for feedback and questions and so forth, so we'll have all of your questions. And you don't have to get now, you can contact us after the meeting or, you know, anytime next week. Is it looks like it's going to be a 25% increase over our current. What solid waste uh collection budget. So that's. Right now, we're paying for curbside collection, curbside recycling. This will be a 25% increase over that, which I think. I was going over some of the figures earlier today. It's about. Let's see. Well, we'll get more into the figures, but that's what it is, 25%.
And it was expected that this was going to be a major increase. We knew that for a while. We had a very advantageous contract, a 10 year contract. Going back with JRM and so we knew there's gonna be, and we 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 thought maybe it could even be higher than 25, but 25 is what we got settled on, so.
Karen?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Um, so just, um, was JRM on here? And and you know what? I'm gonna apologize. My battery was sick and it just died tonight. So this is my computer tonight.
JRM is Republic.
Oh, it's.
Public services.
Yes, okay.
But we public these on.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. So um in general, has Waste Management been having these labor issues and strikes that communities are still dealing with? Like, what is your general?
I'm not aware of any strikes of her, okay, Waste Management. I don't know if they represent, she's shaking her head.
They're not union.
Non-union job. Okay. All right. Um. Oh, so the only thing. Can we talk about um how bulk collections might change a little bit from our current contract?
That's a great question. Yeah.
Thank you. Because we all have a lot of bulk.
So um, so the price proposals we asked for included options for, as we're doing now with one bulk item allowed per week. And then um with all bulk being paid um solely by the residents. And the pricing proposals that came back are all uh that the resident would pay for all bulk. And any um extra items that they wanted to get rid of, white goods, CRT TVs, uh, even scrap metal. If you have something to get rid of, you just call up uh Waste Management, schedule payment pickup with them. Um, they submitted a whole list of rates for what these would be for and um, yeah, then they'll just come to your house and pick it up.
Can you give us an idea of Sogus? I don't know who they're using. They have a really nice system. The residents buy stickers for $2. You slap it on. I'm gonna exclude TVs because we can bring those down to DP and DPW and drop it off, anything with a cord, but. Chairs, things that don't fit in a way a bin that people have that they end up getting rid of. That's a really nice system. It's a $2 sticker versus. $20 every time I need. So that's what I'm wondering, like.
We can look into what that would cost, but that would that would be the town subsidizing bulk collection. Um, with this contract. And so it would be an additional cost on top of. The 25% increase to be able to do that. So we can look into it though.
So if we have to put a kitchen chair out to the curb, let me be very specific. What does it cost to get that taken away?
I believe it would be $35.
For a chair?
For for rent.
For a kitchen chair, wouldn't one?
I think Karen and I are agreement that that sounds kind of ridiculous, for a chair. But like, that's like this chair right here is 35 bucks, like.
What you find in many communities who have programs like this is folks get good at recycling. And recycling and things like that.
Well, no, you are not gonna get any argument from anyone up here about about. Uh, doing that kind of stuff, but like. I have a question. Karen?
This is a very long document.
It is. It is.
And I read the important stuff and scanned the rest. I thought I saw yard waste is not included, which equals leaves. Are we paying for leaf pickup now with our current contract?
Yeah, yes, we are. And yard waste would be included. It would still be the same as we're doing now. That we would have a series of pickups throughout the year, some in the spring, some in the fall.
I think it's, you have six in this contract.
And we're paying extra, or it's just, I thought I, I thought I'm just asking. I thought I saw that.
No, it's all included in that pay and that pricing.
Included, okay, all right. I thought I saw no yard waste or something like that. Okay, thanks. Karen?
Do you want to go before I ask?
No.
Okay, I'm still on the topic of bulk. I'm just wondering. The community is good at recycling, and and I try to recycle a lot. So sometimes there are just things that you cannot get rid of, and that was when those stickers can come in handy. Or things that just aren't going to go in a garbage bag. But does this contract also cover plastic collections, which we're kind of having twice a year, which some communities just, it's a lot easier to bring your bulk plastic somewhere?
We would still continue to have the two bulk, the rigid plastic events each year. Like we do now, one in the spring, one in the fall.
So how does that factor into the pricing? Some communities, it's just a lot, you're not hanging on to these things for so long.
Right, so it would be a dumpster rental for the event, for the day of the event. And then we would now have to pay for the cost of disposing of processing the plastic. Whatever the market.
So is it outside of this contract? It's not?
No, that would be included in this contract, but it would be whatever the market rate was at that time for rigid plastics. So we'd be charged a fee to dispose of or recycle plastic.
No, I under, well, so maybe I don't understand. What what role does the town play? Because obviously DPW's down, they're staffing it. So you're, you know, the guys are and women are working on Saturday or whenever we have it. So they're staffing it, understood, you have to collect it. So where where's Waste Management's role in it, or is this something we do as a town anyway?
Well, Waste Management would provide the dumpster to us, but that would be a rental cost for the day that the town would have to pay. And then when Waste Management takes the dumpster away, they would then charge the town a processing fee, whatever the market rate was at that time, to get rid of the or recycle the rigid plastic.
So it just becomes, we don't getting any service unless we we request it. It's not part of the contract, yeah? It's an ad.
No, those.
Ad hoc service that that company can provide. And is that consistent across all five? Is that how it has been in our current contract?
I'd have to, I'd have to look back on the proposals. I think there were a couple that included a limited base price and then others that said they were going to be separate. But when we look at the overall totals, though, we add everything up, and those are included in the totals that you see there.
Two days, just two days, because that's my concern. That's not enough.
I think to Karen's point is, in our current contract, are we paying in the scenario you just said, renting a dumpster, they're doing whatever? Do we already pay for that anyway?
Right now, in the proposal, it is included in.
No, I'm saying a year ago, a year ago. The JRM contract.
Current service.
Yeah, the current service is, the two events are currently included in what the annual price that we pay.
Included, and the disposal is also included.
The disposal is included because we don't pay for any recycling.
Okay, so it is a change going forward that we will have to pay.
Yes.
Okay.
And did all the vendors are changing it that way?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Just want to make sure they're all.
All vendors are processed.
So Waste Management's price proposal, when you look at it, it's very detailed. It's not just a bottom line number. So you can see how each piece breaks down, but it's still, that piece of it is still included in that $1.9 million price that we're looking at.
Two days per year.
That's right. Price is included.
But nothing prevents us from doing four days a year. It would just have to be negotiated with DPW. Plus, we'd incur twice the amount of dumpster rentals. So I think we brought this up before. That was how we can alleviate traffic and by doing more times a year than just the two. And to Karen's point, yes, we're going to end up, a lot of people are going to be saving stuff. If we did it quarterly, it kind of alleviates that. And we're on the hook for more money, I understand, but, you know, because I have other concerns that we're on the hook for more money in this.
With bulk collection, to your point, it may be useful to increase those plastic events and those those kinds of things we could look at for the additional dumpster rentals.
Not everybody is physically able to like really haul that stuff. I mean, I I still am, and I love that we can drop off anything with a cord at DPW. And so I don't know where that factors in this new contract. That's great. But understanding not everybody can, so that's another reason why those stickers are kind of attractive to certain, you know, residents, because I can get it to the curb, or I can get a neighbor to help me get it to the curb, but I don't, I don't have a car, or I can't really get it anywhere else. Okay, well, no, it's good to understand the parameters and what's included and what isn't.
Carlo, anything?
I'm good.
So I had a couple of questions. So how long is? Sorry, just for the public to be aware, how long would this contract be for, for five years?
Five years.
And is there options to renew beyond the 5111, or is it just five?
Just five.
Okay. And then the, I wrote down percent increase, but I'm not sure why I did that, but.
Actually, a percent increase is 5%.
Oh, so I, yeah, so when I, so after, so is the price the same for all five years, or it scales year to year up to?
No, it's a 5% increase every year for that.
Okay, all right. I mean, that's pretty significant. And then recycling, what is the deal? I know, you know, obviously, we save money by going to the bi-weekly recycling. We have the bigger bins. I'm currently filling the current one I have. I know people can get a second one for no cost. But what is the cost to just stick with the weekly recycling? Is that?
It'd be about $400,000 additional every year.
And does that skew the whole who gets awarded contract thing, or this is already done and dusted, and now we're just?
No, that was a separate bid item, so that would that would come into account for every.
Every vendor?
Every vendor, yeah.
I think that was the lowest price for weekly recycling, and not every vendor offered weekly.
Some didn't, right?
I think.
Yeah, not every vendor offered weekly.
Yeah.
And just, did Waste Management do 400,000, or roughly? Okay. I guess that's the only column that I have. Obviously, the price is going up. We all knew that all along. I guess there's a lot of changes at once. No more bulk collection, bi-weekly recycling. Obviously, there's a lot more good. It sounds like things will be picked up, which is fantastic. And if not, there's some, you know, YouTube show that Waste Management can start putting on the air, everyone's trash. But I guess that's my only pause is just seeing what we can do to minimize the bulk collection and maybe going with the weekly recycling. I know it's not in the, I know the current $2 million is not in the budget to begin with. It is, Sharon kind of put it, you know, as a placeholder, which she thought it would be. So I'm I'm aware that there's no money in the budget for any of this, even though there sort of was. But like, obviously, we were getting hammered in this contract, and we knew it, that it would be going up. So I guess for me, I would just like to see what the 400,000 looks like in her ratios that she so greatly puts together. Just give us a forecast of what this would look like. If Sharon's on, that's great, if she knows offhand.
I I will tell you, based on our conversation earlier, this contract will be $556,000 more than FY '26.
556?
556,000 more than FY '26's current budget.
And what was she forecasting when she talked about this?
She's she's on, we can ask her.
She was looking originally, I think she was hoping for 20% increase is what she was planning for. So bringing in a 25 isn't bad, but that's that's as low as we could go. And we did push every vendor to come back and even do like, we did not, yeah, well, we pushed. So we pushed, Christine knows we pushed. So, yeah.
So Sharon, that's accurate, that we went up 25%. You budgeted 20. And, you know, adding 400 grand onto that even skews it even more. That would be.
If I added another 400, we'd be up, ooh, did I put too many zeros? 43% if I added the 400,000. So it's just, it's not, it's not doable.
Can't say I didn't try.
Can I ask another question? I'm just thinking about, I mean, every one of us, like, yeah, Facebook Marketplace is great. Thrifting is great. All, we do the, yeah, it's great when you can find a home for things. Things get broken, and they're bulky, and are we supposed to hide them in the trash bags? Or are other communities considering, let's just say, let's say you got a frame that gets crushed and broken? I mean, that's wood. We're supposed to stick that in the trash. Or this kitchen chair, which is like split and cracked, it's just end of life, and it's bulky and it's heavy. Do other communities consider hiring a dumpster and or doing a a collection, like twice a year? You know, that's stuff that's hard to get rid of, that really, it's not trash, it's not normal trash, it's not recyclable. $35 for like flotsam and jetsam is silly.
Well, I mean, I do know a lot of communities do something like that, but then it's another added expense to the town.
Yeah, I mean.
Not a small expense either.
Oh, and and Mr. Chairman, through you to Ms. Katelyn Herrick, what some communities do is they subsidize that bulk collection. So it's it's $20 the first year, and then it's $25 the second year. So it it goes up, so the shock isn't quite there necessarily for the bulk.
I mean, what I'm afraid of is people used to throw everything in their backyard.
Well, in dumping, right?
Yeah, well, that's it. Our, you know what? If people can't put it in their trash, and they're thinking that these fees are too high, whether it's $20 or $35, I I am worried kind of the unintended consequences. And then and the numbers you're providing are grim, and and I appreciate the work. I'm not arguing them. Thank you.
Karen?
Well, we have time to train everybody. Get ready, it's coming. Start getting rid of your stuff now. Do you know what I mean? Like, I think education is going to be a huge thing here, and we've got time. And is there a limit to the number of extra recycled barrels we have to offer people? Like, if all of a sudden 50% of the town wants another barrel, will we be able to provide that?
If 50% of the town wants another barrel, I'm not sure we have 50% more barrels in storage right now.
Well, no, they're not.
I don't know.
But between now and when it's long, then within the next year.
You mean a third barrel or a second barrel?
Second recycling barrel, which is free.
We have a budget to procure more of those. And we have some in, we have some in stock that we've overbought to for that purpose.
So I think.
We do our best to cover the demands, you know.
Oh, yeah. I don't think we'll have a rush on it soon, maybe. My next question was, you said that we have an excellent trash waiting as far as the town goes recycling-wise. Will we get to be even better than that? Will we get credit? Do you know what I mean? Like, is there any way, at the end of the five years, if you're such a good town, or we're still recycling well, do you think that there's any way to keep the percentages down?
I think that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, there was conversation that we will, that the blended value will be checked more than once a year, actually. So and that can work in our favor or against us. So the blended value is a moving target.
So the training and the education is.
That's why I'm talking so much about blended value, and we'll work on that as part of our educational piece, because it's it's really good news for us right now. Reading is is a very active community in recycling, composting, all the great things, right? It is a leading community for that, but we want to keep that.
Right.
The one the value is a combination of how good the qual, the makeup of the recycling is with what the market prices.
Right, because I read about it. It was very interesting.
Who knew?
Who knew? I know.
Carlo, there's a question. If Chris can't answer it, hopefully the representative from Waste Management can. I know when we had the public here, dispatched here, that we're talking about going electric. Does Waste Management concern the same thing eventually?
That is a great question, and there is some of that technology in the area. There's a truck up in New Hampshire in some town.
Lundendary.
Lundendary, and they are trying it out. But currently, what they're seeing is that the batteries in those trucks are only lasting like maybe upwards of six hours a day. And with the cold climates, you know, the battery technology is just not there yet. That's why I see more of it in the warmer climates. So maybe someday, but not right now.
Not in this.
Not in this, not in this area right now.
I would just add that even my own truck, I see a massive 30, 40% drop off in in electric. So that's what we brought up the last time with Waste, with Republic, the same thing. Might work somewhere else. We are in New England. Sorry, you gotta move.
You would need a shorter route to be able to accommodate something like that.
Probably all over Arizona.
I lived there for a week. All right, anyone from the, Karen?
I read that you were thinking of having a dumpster for cardboard at the lot. And is that to prevent, to make less trash picked up at the homes, or?
Well, that is just more so because everyone's going to be confined to putting recycling in the carts now. And so if you don't have to fill your cart up with cardboard, you can bring it down to the garage and get rid of it.
Any day, Monday through Thursday.
Monday through Friday, yeah.
Thanks.
And as I said, I will have a more detailed presentation for you all on your meeting on October 7th.
Okay, thanks.
And we actually encourage that because we make money off cardboard, right?
You're like, well, make money. It costs less. It costs less.
Samantha, yes.
I ask a question. Would you, would you consider Monday through Friday to 2:30 doesn't work for everybody? Would you consider like once a month, Saturday hours, or?
Yeah, definitely.
That might be very helpful for a lot of people.
One of the reasons we like having it at the DPW yard is to prevent dumping. And we've seen this, I've seen this happen in other communities where there's a cardboard recycling in sort of a public, easily accessible area, and people just come down and dump other stuff as well. And then it's up to staff or the hauler to come and clean it up. So if it's at the garage, it affords them the ability to use that, have that convenience. But I think your point is is well taken.
Hours, I think.
Yeah, I know.
The folks that get on the train and go into Boston, like, when are they ever going to ever be able to take advantage of this? Like, I'm going to have to take up the day to go and bring my stuff with a cord down there. But it's fabulous that it's, that everyone should use it. It's so easy. There's no lines. That's wonderful.
All right, anyone from the public? Questions? Anyone online, Manny?
Nobody online.
Okey dokey. Thank you, Chris. Thank you for Waste Management's person coming in.
Thanks, Kristi. Thank you for the questions. These are very helpful. If you think of other items or as you speak to constituents, just let us know. Thank you.
Okey dokey. Moving on to 7:55, a little behind, discussion and vote on three-month extension on RCTV license agreement, page 102 in the packet. So Matt, if you want to.
Yeah, so I I did add a memo to this. Sorry, it was a little bit late. We're getting our thoughts together on it. But so we have been negotiating. We've met every weekly or sometimes twice a week. I think there've been a total of like eight meetings negotiating with RCTV. We've made a lot of progress. I I feel Melissa couldn't be here tonight, which is unfortunate because her comments were, I think, be valuable. So and we do have, I noticed in the audience, Phil Rushmore, who's the executive director, is here, Ron Powell from the board, Kathy Crook from the board, and then maybe others that I'm missing online. So Kathy, Phil, Melissa, Jane, and I, also Bob Beckman, we're on the negotiation team. And Angelo Romero as well, we forgot the assistant director there. So in the memo, I just put together, you know, fairly quickly, some of the changes that we're agreeing on currently. You know, some, I I thought about putting in the redline version that we have, but it is still under legal review for some issues. So we're not quite ready to make it public yet, so that's why it's not in here. But I think the memo covers a lot of the, a lot of the changes that we are working on. Nothing is set in stone. That's why we need more time. There's also been some changes at RCTV since June, when we started this whole process. I've highlighted those in there as well. You know, I won't read the memo verbatim to you. It's there for your perusal. But that's essentially what has been going on. And so we do feel we do need more time, not a lot. You know, by by right, I think the town could go up to an additional three months. We could even try for one month, just to try to wrap it up really quickly and then come back to you with something. So I'd at least ask for one month for an extension on this on this process. Let us keep working on it. I think, like I said, we're moving, we're moving ahead. And I don't want to speak for Melissa, but she was on board with this as well, without speaking for her. So and I can open it up. James been on the negotiation team as well as, I'm sure, during public comment. The folks from RCTV may have something to say about it, so.
Board members, any questions? Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate this update, and I I took away an approved collaborative approach. an approved collaborative approach going forward with some of these suggestions, which I think is a good thing. And it struck me that, I'm not sure if the public comment exactly addressed it, but in my head, I thought that, boy, if we could take some of these and also use them for Burbank, it could make things much better working with that organization as well. And as the person did say, it would be more consistent. I had one, I'm a little concerned, and I know things aren't set in stone, set in stone, but since we do have a select board designee who is committed to representing the select board on the board, I wasn't sure that for the necessity of having one of the liaisons then be involved in the evaluation of the director, and I don't mean to use the wrong language, but there was a line item in there about that. I'm not sure that that would be necessary. If our designee is is having open communications with the board members and understanding what the select board would like, I would think that the that designee could adequately do that job. Obviously, liaisons, we depend on them to stay in close contact with, you know, changes and updates. But that's just one area that I questioned the need. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Anyone else? Carlo. Thanks. I know you guys have been working this for a long time. When I when I read the memo, I, you know, wasn't involved in this. It's Melissa. So I see a lot of good things in this memo, but I see a lot of things that give me pause, especially in the in the second section, RCTV changes since June. Reading Post is dissolved. You know, why was it dissolved and who was it given it to? Fundraiser scheduled for October. Why has that been the first fundraiser in years? Podcasts, executive director has been involved in workshops, see with a better office service. Podcasts have been popular for at least ten years. Sponsorship, why are we doing that now? As far as I know, PEC money is going downhill. It has been going downhill. So someone reading this that doesn't have any information on this would think, gee, these are all good things. And yes, they are, but why haven't they been done? And then the last item is really alarming that there's a clause in here that in writing that the executive director, whoever it is, is required to get back to us within one business day. Why is that even in there? I know why it's in there, but that's pretty, that's a red flag to me and as are the other things I stated. So I would like someone, Phil's here to answer some of these questions, especially on the post. Why was it given up? Who was it given to and why? And if Reading Post was going well, why did you get rid? Why did you not keep it? I guess, Bill, do you want to answer?
Phil Rushworth, Millwood Road Running, Executive Director of RCTV. RCTV's involvement with the Reading Post is dissolved. The Post has not been dissolved, to my knowledge. Our, my involvement and RCTV's involvement with it is no longer connect. There's no connection.
Why was it dissolved?
Our connection?
Yes.
Because this board asked us to dissolve that connection.
Okay, and who is it given to?
Was it given to?
Yes. Who runs it, I guess?
The the editor is Catherine Catherine Robertson.
Okay, and what is the relationship to Catherine Robinson to anyone?
To anyone?
Why was it? Why?
She was on the, she was on the editorial board and helped start Writing Post.
Okay, did she ask for it? Was it given to her?
I believe the Post selected her the editor. I don't know.
Was it offered to anyone else?
I don't know what you're, I don't understand your question.
You guys created the Post in my mind illegally, right? But that's a separate topic. There've been some issues with it. You did the right thing by getting rid of it. But I'm guessing this wasn't your sole decision. It was the board's decision and only two people are here. So anyone can answer this. Why was it given to Katie Robinson and why wasn't it put it put out to other people? Why this one individual?
The RCTV did not own the Reading Post. I started the Reading Post with some friends. And RCTV became involved with it. So that relationship between RCTV and the Post is no longer existing. So RCTV did not own the Post.
You didn't use PEC money to to allocate funds towards the Post?
RCTV, with the approval of the board directors, helped fund the writer for covering meetings.
Okay, so the answer is yes?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Can anyone in the audience answer why it was given to Katie and why wasn't it offered to anyone else?
Well, I.
Just up to the podium, Kathy. Thank you. And once again, thank you for being here, Phil, Kathy, Ron. Can I miss someone else? No.
Kathy, Pleasant Street, current president of the Board of Directors for RCTV. When RCTV originally got, with Phil, as he said, with his friends, got the idea for the Post, we went for, you know, we went forward saying, oh, this is a, this is a good thing. It helps the town. When, based on the May and June meetings here at the Select Board, it became obvious that we needed to dissolve the relationship. And what we had offered the Post outside of the the funding one writer, we offered them five oh one C three also and under the auspices of RCTV. So what we did when we dissolved the relationship, they went on and did, you know, they're they're taking and running with it. They're their own entity. They make their own decisions. They decide who is going to be on the editorial board, who is going to be editor, who they are completely on their own. So why Catherine was chosen over others, you're gonna have to ask them. That had nothing to do with us because at that point, our relationship was, she was on the editorial board when our relationship was together. But when she became editor in chief, our relationship was separate.
Who's asked, who's asked them? Who's them? Who am I asking?
The Post, the editorial board of the Reading Post.
Okay, so it wasn't the RCTV board's decision to get rid of the Post? I thought it was.
How, you know, I, so I've been on the board for quite a while. I've been advocating, do we need to be part of it? We had conversations about it, but it was after the conversations that the Select Board had about RCTV in May and June that we went forward with kind of requesting, are you strong enough to be on your own? That was basically it.
Okay, so just so everyone understands, like I'm a three year old, the RCTV board, including Phil and Angela, whoever else, decided we need to separate ourselves from the Reading Post based on a couple of meetings here. Is that correct?
Based based on the conversations.
Okay.
That you brought up.
And then then you dissolve it and then the Reading Post separately, anointed, appointed, whatever, gave it, obviously gave it, Katie Robinson's in charge now.
They created their own leadership.
They created their own leadership. So the RCTV board did not create that. They just separated the two. Okay, that's what I was trying to understand.
Okay.
That's all. I I.
Right, no, that is, we, when they create their own leadership.
All right, so if I wanted to answer to my question, I would have to go to the Reading Post board.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clear that up.
I'm sorry for the line.
No, 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 I it it's I know it was under the umbrella of RCTV. That's why I was getting, I wanted to get it sorted out.
Right.
That.
Right, but leadership is separate.
Right, okay. Does that answer your? That answers it. Yeah, that answers it. I have obviously a lot of concerns, but I don't want to take up the whole meeting on this one topic because there's a lot of alarming things on here. Thanks. So obviously, we had to put this on the agenda. Unfortunately, Melissa was away. We had to schedule things because of the holiday. And obviously, the clock is is running out on this scenario. What also was added into the packet, starting at page one hundred and four, was an additional incident that Matt had noted from Friday's football game. People can read about that in the packet. And my, my sense with everything is I don't want to sit and pick apart an email, a response. I know people might think that I do other things for a living, but I own an IT and security company. That's what I've done for the last twelve, thirteen years. That's what I specialize in, is IT and security. So those kind of things in my area of expertise are paramount. So when when it's noted that there is a Mac computer in the back room unsecured without a password and anyone can go on it, that's a problem in my world. Maybe not a problem in someone else's. I disagree with that, but that's a problem. Having a device on Windows seven that lost security updates in two thousand twenty is a massive problem too. If anybody, if Kevin Ferilla had Windows seven devices in Town Hall right now, I don't think I would have any confidence in him at all to be, you know, supporting our network here. And Kevin is a top tier employee when it comes to security and access and the way that he's set everything else back up there. But like I said, I don't want to sit and hash and slash out and email amongst other things relating to this because, you know, people are gonna have differences of opinions one way or another. And like it's, as as just one example, no one can give many. There's incident how it's mentioned that the Tricaster scenario during the CPDC meeting back in June, the issue with that ended up being that it was human error. And believe me, I agree with the human error scenario. But the way that it's written in the memo is that it's human error that this, it wasn't returned to the home screen to continue the live video and not the audio feed. The point blank end of discussion issue is it's not Rob that didn't return the thing back to the home screen in human error and pushing blame onto him. Rob shut down that meeting with a master power switch like it was supposed to be installed, shut down the meeting and left. The on air light was off. Rob did what he had to do. I don't want to start putting things onto employees that clearly had nothing to do with it. Rob did not rewire the room in there. He did it. So so when I see something like that, that that's just one example that that doesn't sit well with me in an IT and security kind of world where where I'm reading something and I have to read between the lines. So I essentially have one other question for Phil, if you wanted to come up real quick. And I'll preface this with that the way that you answer this tonight is how I will be voting tonight and how I will be voting at the next meeting. And I thought a lot about this because, believe me, meeting I had with Matt and Jane, they could tell that I was torn on what I was gonna be doing here. They'll be the first to admit that this wasn't automatic like everybody thinks. So I preface it with that however you answer this is how I'm gonna be going going forward. My daughter's thirteen years old. And what I tell her is that if something happens, there's some scenario, you come to me and you tell me the truth. And if you tell me the truth, you're not gonna get in trouble. We're gonna work through it together and everything's gonna be fine. But if you lie to me, that's a different story. And that's how I'm raising her. And obviously, my younger one, when she can understand what I'm even talking about, I'd be doing it the same way. So my question to you is, the Friday night broadcast of the football game, did you simply forget to hit the stop live recording button on the stream? Yes or no? It's a yes or no question.
Yes.
You know.
I had to travel from the.
I I I.
This is the.
Karen, I'm I'm.
The same point of order, we are getting off the agenda item.
Karen, you do not have the floor.
Mr. Chair.
Karen, you do not have.
Point of order, we are getting off the agenda item. Mr. Chair, you need to read Robert's Rules of Orders. There are officers in a committee who are not following the rules. Point of order.
I am following the rules.
The agenda item.
This is the agenda item. I asked him a question. He answered me truthfully. Did I mention that part? He answered me truthfully. Because back in our private meeting that we had in May, with Phil, Chris Kirkland and all that, I asked, I asked Phil what the reason was that the election didn't get covered. Because I didn't believe what the reason was that was given publicly that the Tricaster device, we already went over this. But Phil told me that he didn't feel it was important. And he answered me honestly then. And he answered me honestly now. And I think that that is something that we can work with. You know, I I I I I'm not here to be the evil person that some people make me out to believe. I believe in second chances, fourth chances, fifth chances. I told you I can argue this. I'm blue in the face. You answered truthfully. I'm going to agree to the thirty day extension here and more likely than not, I will approve the contract myself. I'm just one person. And I'll tell her if that comes up. So I thank you for your time. I I would just leave the board with this, is you heard Phil's decision. And if that squares away with what you were told, great. If it doesn't, and you have your own decision to make, it's not mine, it's yours. So thank you. Anyone else from the public have any questions? Karen, go ahead.
So just to be clear, the memo, are we gonna have an opportunity to, once you're finalized, do we have an opportunity to revisit some of these line items that there's a little more clarity so I don't have to bring up specifics?
Yes, I. I specifically brought that up because while I agree that Melissa's gonna do a good job, RCTV is gonna do a good job in this scenario. That obviously there's some other items that I'd like to see added. I gave Matt and Jane some feedback the other day on what I think can be done within reason that they can bring back to the board. Like I said, I've been staying on it.
So we can give you feedback based on this?
Yeah.
I'll just.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll take any feedback you have.
All right, thanks.
That's wide open.
Thanks.
So to clarify for everyone, the agenda item we have is to vote on a three month extension? Is that what the motion is as well?
No, it's up. So it's, the way that the agenda item is written is different than what Matt's Matt's recommendation.
Yes, I understand that. In a Carling Open Meeting Law, we need to follow an agenda item that we publish forty eight hours in advance. So our agenda item is we need to discuss a vote on a three month extension on the RCTV license or we can table the agenda item.
If you want to table it, I will let Matt and Jane explain to you what happens.
I'd like to call for the motion if when everyone's done.
I'm telling you, Karen, if you want to table this until after September thirty first, two thousand twenty five, that is within your right. But I have unfortunate news for you is that RCTV will cease to exist after that.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like us to focus on the agenda.
All right, so feel free to to vote accordingly, Karen. I I'm advising against it, but. Karen, do you have a motion? Well, I asked for anyone from the public first, sorry.
So I have a motion in front of me, but the agenda is something different.
I'm still in public. I I think.
So we have an open meeting law and it is said that you will put the agenda items and you will discuss those agenda items. And we are not allowed legally to to discuss things that we have not previously published. So if you do not want to vote on a three month extension tonight, you know, we could vote to table it. I I don't think that's a wise decision.
Personally, I disagree because the information is contained in the packet. Mentioning October thirty first, Karen has a motion on October thirty first. But in the interim, while I entertain public comment, Matt, I know everyone's coming on for the charter.
Yeah, I believe she's, I believe she's on already if we wanted to.
Well, if she's on, fantastic, then we'll take public comment.
Do you want me to go opine or do you want to take public comment first, Chris?
I'll just get your opinion, if you on the. I'll just get your opinion, Evria, on the agenda item.
So, go ahead. It, it's my position that you can grant them up to a three month extension. We don't have to read the agenda item as rigid. Members of the public were advised that there was a possibility they could get a three month extension. I would equate this to something similar like a town meeting warrant article where we may say we're going to appropriate fifty thousand dollars, but then the motion at town meeting is for twenty five thousand dollars. Anyone that was interested in the, in the appropriation around fifty thousand dollars would have attended and therefore the lesser is part of the motion. I would say the same is true here. Anyone that had interest in the fact that there might be a three month extension would know to come and you're giving them less than what was possibly noticed. There would, would be a potential issue, just like at town meeting, if you sought to exceed the amount of time established in the agenda item, four months, or if you went for sixty thousand dollars at town meeting. So I'm comfortable with the board proceeding with a vote that's, you know, one month, two months or three months.
Thanks, Evria, that's helpful. That's how I was interpreting this one. All right, anyone from the public? Nancy, I don't think you spoke on RCTV, did you? I'm not sure.
No, I didn't.
All right, all along.
Spoke about the board being consistent.
Yes.
Nancy Dr. Pearl Street. So I'm curious, other than three select board members, how many residents submitted to the board or to the manager that they would like you to not renew the contract? Because I am interested as a community member and as a member of RCTV, since it's Redding Community TV, my understanding is that there's been a lot of community support for RCTV. But I would like to know from the board and from the town manager if, well, actually I can't because it's public comment, you can't answer me. But I would be surprised if you got any request not to renew this contract from residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. And yes, we don't respond, but I break that rule all the times, I will, and your answer is zero. And I myself, as well as everyone else, has been in favor of RCTV and the thing they did with the community. And I will have a nice presentation for the final execution of the contract in the future, whatever ends up being. But nobody has ever had an issue with RCTV in general. Over at the schools, phenomenal. I haven't heard a single iota issue of anybody over there ever with the program that she puts over there. And obviously RCTV pays for it, which is, you know, fantastic. No, nobody's ever said a negative thing about that at all, ever, nor have I, Carlo, Karen or Karen or Melissa. But yes, that answers that. Anyone else? Ron. Name and address, two minutes.
Ron Powell, three twenty eight South Street. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Board members, thank you. I'm honored to have been recently appointed by you to serve on the RT, RCTV Studios Board Directors. And I want to thank you for your time tonight. I stand before you with one simple request. Now you extend RCTV's contract, its current contract for three months. The message from the select board has been clear. You seek better communication, stronger commitment to innovation and services that reflect the needs of our community. I share those goals and I'm excited to continue working with you towards achieving them. The extension will ensure that RCTV can continue serving the community without interruption. It gives us time that we need to finalize a long term solution. And it's a practical step that allows us to build something even better for residents together. We've already made great strides over the summer. And with your continued support, I'm confident that we'll reach an agreement that strengthens both RCTV and the town. Let's keep moving forward, united in our common goal to serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Anybody else in the room? Hey, Catherine.
Am I allowed to speak in there?
I make the rules, so yes, go ahead. I've never said no. Name and address, two minutes.
Yeah, Kathy Crook, Pleasant Street. I just have, being a part of the negotiating group, we have worked really hard. We are fine tuning things. You've got stuff, we've got more, more stuff to work on. I would like to encourage the full three months, knowing we are working hard not to use the full three months. I don't want to have to come back in the month now saying we're this close and could we have another month? We, as, and we've said it as a group, as much as we've enjoyed spending time together, we're done. You know, we want to, we want to wrap this up as soon as possible. But I really don't want to see us back here in a month asking for another month. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I don't negotiate with public comment, but I could kind of.
Sorry.
Just bouncing the idea in my head, I, I still think we always need runway at the end, regardless of what outcome I might have just said. But I think that if we could split the difference and go with two months, so November thirty days comes September, April, June, November. So November thirtieth, I think that seems fair where nobody's coming back. That's like two months from now. I understand Thanksgiving, whatever else with that. But for me, like that's in the middle of everything and hopefully that makes everyone here happy. It's not nine, it's not thirty, it's not ninety, sixty. So that's kind of where I'm at. So anyone else, public comment? Online, Maddie?
Yep, we have two online. Sarah had their hand raised first.
Hi, Sarah Bruco洛kio, forty eight Maple Ridge Road. So glad I went after Evria and Ron because that was a couple of my questions. But I, I guess I'm here because once again, I just want to express my gratitude to RCTV. I've known these people that for, both Phil and Angela for a long time, going back to the first time they showed me how to work a camera so I could take the Pinewood Derby for my son when he was a Cub Scout and he's thirty two now. But, and I do, I do feel for the, all of the emotional impact this has had on everybody. And I was so happy when I saw the updated packet that had the information stating sort of like where all these negotiations have led to, which is all very, very positive. And I agree with Karen that it's probably a similar experience that should happen with Burbank. So the sooner, whatever it is, the sooner that the town manager and RCTV and the select board thinks that we can get a new contract in place, I'm all for it. And I, once again, I just want to express my gratitude to RCTV.
Thanks, Karen. Thanks for being on CPA and the Par Committee as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Maddie?
Angela Benda.
Did she speak on RCTV? You already did, Angela. I gotta, I gotta hold firm on my, you already spoke on the topic. So is there anybody else?
I think I spoke on Burbank. I didn't speak on RCTV.
All right, Karen agrees with you, so I agree with you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Angela Benda, Orchard Park Drive. In the past, Mr. Haley has been very strict about agenda items and not wanting to stray for it. So I do feel that there needs to be a, an understanding of what was on it. And I think I did look at the packet. I'm not sure what the town manager recently submitted. I don't know when that was submitted, but I don't believe that anything information, any information that was just submitted to the, to, you know, within a day is really allowing the town adequate time to know what was there and to digest it. So what was on the agenda was three months. I'm going to respectfully, I'm not going to disagree with town council, but I am disagreeing with how the chair has interpreted things before. And I'd also like to say, Mr. Bachi has had this question for so long. I wish that he would speak to the town moderator, Alan Foles, who was on the board for a long time. I wish that he would speak with Catherine Robertson. I'm not sure why these questions keep going to Phil in these very pointed discussions while he's there. He's had these questions for a year and a half longer. He could get them answered. I would be very happy to hear what Mr., what our town moderator has to say. And I, I encourage Mr. Bachi to speak to the town moderator because he served on the board of the Post. So that would be great. I'd love to hear his, Mr. Bachi's update after he's spoken to Mr. Foles. But I agree, three months, that's what's on the agenda. That's what should be voted on. Thank you.
Perfect timing, Angela. Anyone else online?
Don't say any other hands.
Thank you. And I just want to point out real quick that RCTV and the Post dissolved in July, not last year. So only things that are relevant now would have to be asked. Obviously it's a couple of months, but it's not a year. So like I said, and Evria mentioned that we can do up to whatever. I'm being manageable and doing in the middle. I think it's fair. I don't think that, I don't think that they're not going to get stuff done. Obviously Kathy mentioned that they can get things done before then. And I asked Matt and Jane prior, how much percent, if they had a gauge? It's like eighty, eighty-five percent kind of thing. To Karen's other point, she wants some input, which obviously we need input. It doesn't matter what, what Melissa just comes up with and what their two board members come up with. It's the full board. So if we want a couple of things added to change tweak, we need time for that to be added. I already gave my feedback to Matt. I would direct everyone else to give the feedback to Matt. Matt can bring it up to the group, they can hash things out and then they'll give us answers. So we're not taking up multiple meetings with this. But I'd like to see the motion sixty days from November thirtieth. And we'll see if that passes and then go from there. Splitting the difference is forty five days. Well, I meant, no. Between, is it? Half of three months is forty five. I've given them actually. All right. November thirtieth, like I said, the holidays getting over there. We don't want to do it late in Thanksgiving. I don't know what date that is. So that's where I'm at, November thirtieth. So Karen, if you just want to change the date to that and read the motion.
Move pursuant to section six of the grant agreement with Redding Community Television, parentheses, RCTV, and parentheses, dated June twentieth, twenty nineteen, to extend the grant agreement for an additional two months until November thirtieth, twenty twenty five, on the same terms and conditions. Am I allowed to second?
No, yeah, someone else wants to second it. I'll second. No, no. I recant. It, it seems as if we are going the three month route. So I, nobody's seconding your motion. So if you want to go back to the. You can withdraw. Yeah, withdraw. So go back to, yes, what's, no. Ninety days, wait, December thirty first? Yeah. Okay.
Move pursuant to section six of the grant agreement with Redding Community Television, parentheses, RCTV, and parentheses, dated June twentieth, twenty nineteen, to extend the grant agreement for an additional three months till December thirty first, twenty twenty five, on the same terms and conditions.
Nobody's seconding this either. I never.
Second. Just giving you guys some opportunity, second.
Oh, well, I've never seconded anything. That's fair. All right, any discussion?
Oh, yeah, I have some.
Okay, Carl.
Okay, I don't know what BS Ms. Benda was spewing, but Redding Post just got dissolved. And I asked a legitimate question, so I'm sick of this bullshit that I'm getting accused of, just like you did with pickleball. On Swec, I never advocated for myself on pickleball, advocated for pickleball. So I'm sick of this bullshit from Angela Benda who keeps on attacking me. Yeah, good, point of order yourself, yes. I'm talking now, I'm talking now. You can, yeah, I'm talking now. The chair can shut me down if he wants.
All right, we're off topic.
All right, we're off topic. I got it out there, I'm just sick of it. I'm, you should advocate for yourself, you're being falsely attacked. This is ridiculous. I asked a legitimate question about the post that I became aware of two weeks ago. Two weeks ago, and this wasn't in public knowledge, that they dissolved the post. I found out two weeks ago, I'm under the board. So I'm, I'm sick of it, she's a horrible person and.
Oh, that's enough.
Any other discussion?
What's chocolate? I got extra.
So it's December thirty first is the current motion. Karen, are you ready to vote? Or do you want chocolate?
No, I have three, but you guys, here, give them to Carl, he needs one, he'll feel better. There you go. You see where I'm at?
No, I'm, I'm going to die, I think.
Now you're doing a food fight?
I have my own chocolate.
You're cursing and doing a food fight in the select board.
I make chocolate for a living.
Oh, oh, I'm actually sorry about that. Okay, sorry. Yep.
All right, no other discussion, so all those in favor?
Favor of extending the contract, yes.
Three, all those opposed, one, three to one. All right. Moving on.
Hey, at least I didn't offer you a peanut butter cup.
So eight, ten, discuss and vote on new alcohol liquor license for Champion Golf, who's been waiting here and it's not as exciting as they thought it was going to be and more.
More exciting.
Yes. Page one hundred and ten of the packet. After this, we'll take a break.
All right, thank you. My legs are crossed. Okay, is this going to be quick though? Otherwise I'll just get back.
So they, they seem very ready and capable.
We're ready.
Yes. Matt, did we have anything else? Did we have to put something up on screen for them or?
Not that they provide, you could, we could go to the page in the packet if that, if they'd like that. Yeah. And it's a public, it's just a.
Yeah, no, I just think, yeah. So just one ten in the packet, Maddie, and then just go ahead. You're good.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Matthew Porter and the attorney for Champions Indoor Golf Five Inc., attorney in Easton, Massachusetts. Along with me is Andrew Gilde. Mr. Gilde is one of the principals of the applicant before you. Alongside me on my other side is Andrew Coche. Andrew, or Aaron, I'm sorry. Aaron is the proposed license manager, meaning he'd be the person on site at a bare minimum forty hours per week. Before you is a request for an all alcohol license. This relates to the opening, or hopeful opening of a new indoor golf facility at the Market Basket location, Plaza one twenty eight Market Place Shopping Center. These folks have been in the industry for several years. Andrew got his start at Pine Hills Golf Club in Plymouth, working as a pro there. They started an indoor golf facility with certain bays and technology inside there. So Andrew got his start there from there, decided to branch out on his own. They opened the first Champions in Bridgewater a couple of years ago now. It's been a huge success within the town. The community has really welcomed them, you know, as part of, you know, a plethora of things they do. But they, they offer leagues throughout the winter. Obviously golf is a very short season in New England. So it's become a really good gathering spot. In addition to that, obviously there's lessons. These guys are all golf pros that are there. And they've really invested in the youth movement of the game, as Andrew, you know, can state more eloquently than I can. But the, the youth is the future of their sport. So they run a lot of lessons through the youth programs as well. So, you know, before you today, you know, is the request for the alcohol license. But it generally just relates more so to the, to the opening of their business. Both Andrew and Aaron are alcohol tips certified. They go through all their alcohol tips training. But the alcohol really is a ancillary, you know, product to this. If someone is swinging and they want to have a beer or something along those lines, but it's not a, it's not a gathering place, it's not a bar, it's not a sports bar or anything along those lines. They will offer food throughout that, they're going to have a fully functioning kitchen as well. So again, they, they've had a great track record in the other communities they've, they've been in and they're very excited to be part of this community as well.
All right. Since it didn't say public notice at the beginning of the agenda item, I didn't realize it. It's still a public hearing, so Karen, you still have to read the hearing notice to open here.
To the inhabitants of the town of Redding, please take notice that the select board of the town of Redding will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty five, at seven PM in the Selectable Meeting Room at Tune Hall. Sixteen Lowell Street, Redding, Mass are also available remotely on Zoom. Are also available remotely on Zoom. Act on a new license application for an annual all-alcohol restaurant license located at One General Way, Unit ninety, Reading, Mass. For Champions Indoor Golf Five, Inc., DBA Champions Indoor Golf. A copy of the proposed documents regarding this topic will be in the Select Board Packet on the website at www.reddingma.gov. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing in person or remotely via Zoom, or may submit their comments in writing or by email prior to six P.M. on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, to townmanager@reddingma.gov. By order of Matthew Fornellis, Town Manager.
Thanks, Karen. And then, did you guys have anything else that you wanted us to?
No, I would be remiss to say that we've had a great relationship with the landlord, who has been so kind to spend her time with us this evening as well. So we're off to a great start with them. The lease is in place, you know, everything is in order. I would say, I spoke with your office today, there's a common vicular license that would have to be applied for, that comes along with the all-alcohol license. But I've been told that can just be completed online. This license, if it was approved by the board tonight, goes off to the ABCC and gets lost in the ether for three to four months. So, you know, we'll be able to take care of all the common vicular and local licensing in the meantime. So that's it that I would add. And certainly, I can answer any questions that the board may have, Andrew and Aaron can as well.
Carla?
Thank you. I don't golf, but I think it's a great idea. You said you have a current location?
Yes.
Now? What kind of menu is that at location?
So the other locations are a little bit different. Certain communities have general on-premise licenses that don't require functioning kitchens. Reading does have, requires that their four A licenses be restaurant oriented. So in the other locations, it's a little bit of a mixed bag. One of them where they don't have a kitchen, they have a takeout menu from like a local establishment next door. I believe in Bill Rica, we settled on a hot dog heating machine as a compromise. But here, this location, because of, you know, Reading's requirements, will have a functioning kitchen. So Andrew can speak a little bit more to the items.
Yeah, still minimal kitchen. The idea is bar pizzas and a commercial air fryer. So chicken fingers, french fries, you know, really simple sort of bar eats items. But from a food point of view, trying to keep it as simple as possible.
Right, right. Yeah, okay. More monkey proof to have.
Yeah, and I think the design is, you know, folks aren't there to, you know, to eat, you know, so this gives them an opportunity to grab a snack or something along the lines when they're either in their leagues or, you know, taking lessons.
No, the reason I was asking because I, because I don't golf, was I was invited to a party at one of these establishments, it wasn't yours, and the food was phenomenal. That's why I was asking.
Yeah, well, maybe they'll get there eventually.
Yeah. The golf is phenomenal.
That's good. And when you plan open, if all things go well?
Beginning of the summer.
Beginning of the summer, all right. Good luck. I think it's a great location, and I really appreciate that landlord being here. This is probably the second time in my recollection. I think Mr. Vaccaro came once on Half and Half's Zuka's behalf. And I would like to see this more often. I, you know, I'm really thankful. And sometimes proponents are on Zoom, so thanks again for coming in person. Shows your commitment, and thank you very much.
Karen?
Yeah, just, can you refresh my memory? I did, as you, you were all speaking, I was, at some point, the regulations came into effect that we need to deliver alcohol and food together in Reading because we take our alcohol regulation and making sure we're not serving minors or any underage individuals very, very seriously. Matt, can you, is it, is Reading unique in this? I actually thought it was a state. I can't remember.
I think it is, but Town Council may know better than I, and she, I think she's still on the call. Maybe she could answer that question where it's, you know, for the statewide issue, so. Avery, are you able to answer that question?
Yeah, so there are many communities across the Commonwealth that don't allow what's called like a general on-premise license, a license that isn't attached to a common vicular. So it's not uncommon, but it's not a state requirement. You can have a license, a liquor license, under state law without a CV, provided the local regulations permit it.
So how is Reading implementing this? I'm just wondering, is this a bylaw or is this something the Select Board made a decision on at some point? That this is how we wanted our establishments to function?
So I don't have your liquor license regulations memorized, but my, but my recollection is that it's in your regulations that you require that. And I haven't seen this application. Did you apply for a restaurant license?
It was a restaurant license, yes. It was advertised as a restaurant license as well.
It was advertised as a restaurant license.
So I did double check the ad when that came through, so it was.
Okay, perfect, yeah.
This is two different distinctions. It's either a section twelve restaurant pouring licenses or a section twelve on-prem, uh, general on-premise.
Exactly. So at the ABCC, they're also going to require that this applicant obtain a CV if they haven't already had it. By the time that the ABCC is processing the application, it generally becomes conditioned on issuance of a CV.
Okay, thank you. I golf badly, so I'm excited. I like French fries, so it sounds good. I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Karen, you have anything good?
Oh, maybe I'll take up golf, though.
Let's do it.
Why not?
I'd make a joke and ask if you have an orange dinosaur, but, you know, there's a blue one in Reading now, a brontosaurus, so maybe you guys can do something else to compliment those two. Who knows? But as Karen mentioned, we do take alcohol seriously here, and hopefully you guys do as well. We don't, we're not fond of violations. I think there's been one since I've been on the board, maybe. But just please know that we do take that very seriously. And I know you do, but like, you can see what can happen here.
Yes, we can. And, you know, but they've had no issues whatsoever at any of their other locations. And, you know, not just Andrew and Aaron getting alcohol certified, but any, you know, future employees, you know, they have an internal, you know, requirement, you know, within their company to make sure everybody's alcohol certified as well. So they take it very seriously.
All right. Anyone from the public? Questions, comments?
Jody Hayward, One Twenty-Eight Marketplace.
Just over there, please.
Welcome. I'm sorry.
I had, it's for people at home, not for me.
Jody Hayward, One Twenty-Eight Marketplace, representing the landlord. We just want to say we're delighted to, you know, present Andrew and his team. They're the best of the best in the business, so I think everyone will be happy. We're happy to provide this service to Reading.
Glad to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone online, Matty?
No hands online.
All right, Karen, can I get a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing regarding the new annual all-alcohol restaurant liquor license for Champions Indoor Golf.
Second.
Second by Karen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Four zero. Well, no, hold on, next one.
Move to approve the annual all-alcohol restaurant liquor license for Champions Indoor Golf Five, Inc., DBA Champions Indoor Golf, located at One General Way.
Second.
Second by Karen. Any discussion? All those in favor? Four zero.
Okay, very much. Appreciate it. Have a good night. Thank you.
We'll take a two-minute break. We'll be back at eight o'clock. Thank you.
Rob, we're back. Give you five seconds. Five. Are we alive?
Not again.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so now we will move on to discuss and vote on transfer of all alcoholics license for you. Yachus, DBA, Oyes. Question. Uh, in bar located at 26 Walkers Brook Drive, page 174 in the packet. And Karen, do you have a motion?
Do you have a legal notice? To the inhabitants of the town of Reading, please take notice that the select board of the town of Reading will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 16th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the select board meeting room at Town Hall, 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Mass. Are also available remotely on Zoom to act on a transfer of license application for an annual all alcohol restaurant license located at 26 Walkers Brook Drive, Reading, Mass, from Coke Inc., DBA Oyes, to Utah Inc., DBA Oyes Restaurant and Bar. A copy, I apologize if I misspoke. A copy of the proposed documents regarding this topic will be in the select board packet on the website at www.reddingma.gov. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing in person or remotely via Zoom or may submit their comments in writing or by email prior to 6:00 PM on September 16th, 2025 to townmanager@reddingma.gov. By order of Matthew Fornellis, Town Manager.
Thanks, Karen. Um, some, yeah. I have somebody online.
Yeah, I believe there's at least one or two people online from Oyes that are on the Zoom right now, so I can ask them to identify themselves and speak.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Attorney Russell Chen. I apologize to you, my camera doesn't seem to be working, but I can see you and I hope you can hear me clearly. Here on behalf of the Utah Inc., Oyes Restaurant and Bar, and joined by Mr. Zeman Wu. Mr. Wu is the President and Officer, Office Holder for the corporation. We're here applying for a CB license and the application as well for a transfer of the full liquor license. This would be an on-premises Section 12 restaurant license. Mr. Wu has approximately 11 years of experience as a server, including four years at the Oyes Restaurant. We have provided you with copies of his tip certifications on page 133 of the alcohol application. We're also applying for entertainment license, three televisions and a touch tune machine. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have on this application.
Um, I can't, sorry, Jane, you were in the way. Sorry. Um, all right. Board members, any questions?
Can I just, um, not that I'm the most enlightened person about trends in restaurants, what kind of entertainment will you're, you be offering via these televisions?
It would be mostly, um, I think, sports types of entertainment as well as, I don't know if he's interested in doing the karaoke where the people can, can sing, but he might be the answer to that. I believe that these, these monitors strictly for showing regular sports kinds of shows.
Okay, that seems reasonable. Um, yeah, okay, I didn't know you needed an entertainment license to have televisions in a, in a restaurant. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? So I don't know if you heard our prior speakers who also were going for alcohol license, but the select board takes liquor here in Reading fairly significantly. It's paramount. At this point, it's ingrained in our minds, uh, the, you know, the rules and regulations, and we want to make sure that, you know, nobody is, is serving underage or over-serving. So you did mention that Mr. Wu had his chip certifications in there, and you said 11 years. Is that correct?
Yes, since 2014, including four years at this restaurant.
Okay, good. All right. Circuits, please note that we do take it seriously. Did anyone else have anything? Anyone from the public? Anyone else online, Maddie?
Nobody online.
All right, Karen, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the hearing regarding the new, no, move to close the hearing regarding the transfer of the annual all alcohol liquor license to Utah Inc., DBA Oyes Restaurant and Bar.
Second.
Seconded by Karen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Four zero. Next one.
Move to approve the annual all alcohol restaurant liquor license for Utah Inc., DBA Oyes Restaurant and Bar located at 26 Walkers Brook Drive.
Second.
Seconded by Karen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Four zero. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to 8:30, uh, public information session number two, review charter changes in preparation for town meeting, including potential discussion and vote to amend town manager removal and town manager resignation sections not applicable to Matt currently or in the future or not been for date him. So that is page 310 of the packet. We went over this last meeting. Um, I don't see anyone from the charter here tonight. So Evria is available. I believe the rigmarole is that the select board can vote on the charter changes, the two minimal ones. One is removing the word legal from what was there before. And then the second one is what Karen Hill brought up last time, we checked the minutes, we did read a strike it if it was, unless it was going to cause some special act, if we looked into it, we don't have to. So, um, the Charter Committee then was in agreement with it, so I would say that, you know, currently we still are. And Matt, did you have something?
I just want to mention there are some members on Zoom of the charter.
More than?
I don't, I see Jonathan Barnes, Jesse Arnold, Jeff Struble.
I need one more. Um, no, we need five, needing one more.
I don't see a fifth unless there's somebody that I'm not seeing.
Is there a quorum online or three?
There is one, two, three online.
Yeah.
We don't have a quorum, but they are there.
Mr. Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
Um, thank you. So I think, you know, after looking at it and in some of the emails today, it might have gotten lost in translation. So because we are amending Section 5.1 through special acts, Section 5.1 is the section that contains the provision around the town manager's termination pay, that I think it just makes sense to send that to the legislature through special legislation, um, because we're already sending 5.1 to the legislature. So it feels like a clean, complete change. So there's two ways of moving forward. The board tonight, I think, you know, that it was recommended that, that this proposal be added to the warrant as submitted by the bylaw committee. I do think it, these are de minimis changes. Um, we could just make those changes, or we could wait till the Charter Committee to meet, um, they could vote on it, and then on the floor of town meeting, make a motion to amend. So there's two options for proceeding. And I defer to, yeah, I guess the members of the Charter Committee that are here tonight as well as the select board.
So I already gave mind that this was the spirit of what we agreed to do before, and we are already, like you said, we're sending a couple items regardless, not just five, you might have got in the memo, um, the other items that are getting sent anyway. Um, so in the spirit of that, like, I'm fine with the select board voting, but I will take, you know, input of Jonathan, Jesse, and who did you say the other one was?
Um, Jonathan, Jesse, and Jeff.
So Jonathan, Jesse, Jeff, do you have any feedback, what you think? We went back and looked at the minutes, like I said, and we did agree to strike the, the termination pay clause from the contract that we discussed. So if anyone wants to say anything.
Chris?
Yep, go ahead.
Jeff Struble, um, are we gonna have a meeting before town meeting to essentially talk about presentation?
Um, I think that we had discussed at the final meeting where, um, I believe I was going to do the whole thing. I think that's what was, Alan wanted us to stay out of it, obviously. Um, but, but nothing prevents us, I don't think, from actually doing that. But I think the issue is, the way that it's going in the warrant, it's going in the warrant in one way tonight, right, Evria? Like, that's.
Yeah, and so I think if you add it to the warrant tonight with the changes to 5.1 and 5.5 dot two, um, the Charter Commission Committee will need to meet to vote to, um, make a recommendation on the suggestion of the select board. Um, so I think another meeting will be required.
That's why, that's always asking about presentation, because we could have done it at that meeting, but we're talking about who says what.
So to, to that point, Evria, what you would be doing tonight is alleviating a motion on the floor and having a vote and taking town meeting time to just make this change. There may be other changes that they're going to want to come up with, which would have more weight than this. This is just, that's why I think that we do it now, and then the Charter Committee can reconvene like October or something, we'll see if we can do something before November. Does that sound good, Jeff, Jesse, Jonathan?
I certainly concur. This is Jonathan, I concur. All I do have to comment, Jeff sounds like he's, uh, he's ill, so I hope he's feeling well and getting better.
Temporarily, Jonathan.
Glad to hear it.
Yeah, I sound like Darth Vader, but sorry. I just, while I didn't come in, didn't personally, I didn't want to contaminate everybody in the room, so.
No, it's, thank you. Uh, Jesse, did you have any feedback?
Um, I concur with Jonathan and trying to get a meeting before, so.
Okay. All right, so that's kind of the deal. I'd like to see it voted in here tonight, and the charter can meet, and then we'll, you know, um, put something formal to town meeting. But I, I just want to alleviate the issue at town meeting for this.
I can hear the bell.
All right, so when I take in a charter vote, we will take a select word vote on this, um, when we get to it. Did you have something, Karen, or no? Okay. Um, so, let me just double check. So there's nobody here from the public for me to go over the charter changes again, right? And nobody online, Maddie, that is interested in any of this? That, I mean, other than Jonathan and Jesse?
There's a few other people online.
So I guess I'll just open it to the public right now, in the interest of time for me not to go over the whole charter again. I'm gonna go over just the quick briefing that Evria has, um, and then obviously the two big changes. But the charter is online, it has been for a while, it's been voted on unanimously, other than rate voter on the RLD section, which is kind of moot at this point. Um, but, you know, we put a lot of time effort, energy in this, there's a YouTube video where we go over all of the changes and why they happened. The last select board meeting, I went over various changes why they happened. Karen caught one of the sections in that, which is good. We went back to the minutes, Laura provided that, that's why we're changing, um, just that one section to be stricken out of there, as well as changing the word legal. Um, so if anyone from the public wants to talk about this, I will go over anything with you now. Otherwise, I'm just gonna briefly go over the article changes real quick. Give them a moment. All right, so really quickly, in the spirit of time, um, so on page 310 of the packet, because there's opioid stuff and everything else that had to go in here, um, there is, Evria has assembled a good cheat sheet on what is happening, um, with specific changes other than changing select board, other than changing selection to select board, um, his, her, uh, they, them kind of language. Other than that, maybe some other random small stuff, there's, uh, Evria's cheat sheet page 310 that kind of outlines the big examples, and if it does require a special act from the legislature. So when we started the town, um, Charter Review Committee, we said that, you know, if something's gonna be a, an act that had to be, you know, specially reviewed and all that, we weren't gonna, we weren't gonna do it, and we kind of added things up as they went. And as it turns out, there is a couple special act ones, so that's why, um, uh, those are in there. Otherwise, if we didn't, if we had one, we probably wouldn't have, uh, made any of those kind of changes. Um, so specifically, that is 1.6, requiring a special act, which is expanding the definition of local news medium to include the town website, and then redefine a majority vote to mean a majority of those present in voting. It seems ridiculous that we have to include the town website as a local news medium, but a lot of information is on, obviously, the town's website. Um, but we, so we had to put that in there. And then, um, redefining majority vote, vote to mean the majority of those present and vote. Um, so then skipping ahead to the next page, so that other special act is 2.6, and that is to provide an opportunity to be heard before removal from town meeting. Um, and then 2.12 dot one, clarify the process for appointment when the chair of the finance committee is in the last year of their term, um, which then coincides with the bylaw committee underneath it. So those were being changed because, um, it was felt that the chairs of those committees voting on themselves did not seem appropriate warranted, and Evria had paused. So we are just removing that and clarifying that those members, um, if they are in their final year of the term, then they would be appointing, then the, that committee would appoint somebody else to vote, um, on their behalf, as long as they weren't in their final year of their term as well. So that's Finance Committee and the bylaw committee for that. Uh, 2.15 dot one is clarify the process for submitting a petition. Um, no special acts under anything in Article Three, Article Four. Um, so 4.8 establishes the membership of the historical commission at five individuals. That doesn't require a special act. Um, and the same thing for the Town Forest Committee at five individuals. And then moving on to Article Five, Town Manager, 5.1 is requiring a special act, and that amends the qualification for appointment to the position, removes that provision on termination pay, which was brought up last meeting, um, to the extent that the select board wants to offer termination pay such as, pay may be outlined in the town manager's contract. So it's removing that provision that came up two years ago when, or three years ago with, uh, with Bob's contracts. We are striking that gray area from there. Um, and then, uh, the qualifications on that is making it a little bit more or less strict, requiring prior experience, um, because there's been, um, changes in the job market for town managers. Uh, 5.3 is amending the title of ombudsman to constituent services officer, Matt brought this up, um, to be more gender neutral, that's where we're going with, and ombudsman made it seem like they were doing other things.
Is that the CSS?
Yes.
CSS.
Uh, 542 clarifies term of employment may be set by select board, that requires a special act for the town manager. Article Six, administrative organization, 6.2 amends the qualification for appointment to the position, uh, that does not require a special act. And then we skip all of Article Seven, there's nothing requiring special acts or any callouts there. Um, Section Eight is the most significant in changes. Um, so 8.8 dot two, uh, does not require a special act, but it clarifies that copies of rules and minutes shall be available on the town website. They currently are, I believe, anyway, but we're just clarifying. Um, 8.11 dot two, uh, which requires a special act, amends the number of registered voters that must have been a recall affidavit. It incorporates additional notice provisions relative to the recall process and expands the time for filing recall petition, amends the number of signatures required to trigger a recall election. Um, so this was brought up and discussed, you know, maybe half a meeting, maybe a meeting. Jesse was making some proposals, I offered some changes to make it, you know, if you're gonna require more to happen, that means we need more days, so that's the long and short of how this got changed, um, to require more signatures, but also allow more time for recall and things to happen. 8.12 dot one clarifies the removal process for appointed officials, that's Jonathan Barnes, uh, which also 8.12 dot two and 8.12 dot three, which is, um, amending the number of days notice required for removal hearing and clarifying the removal process and hearing procedure. So essentially, this revolves around more notice to individuals and affording them a, a process. It's not restricting, uh, anyone's rights. And that is the long and short of this. So the two motions, do we have? Did you have those, Karen, so we can kind of just see what they said first? Or how are we gonna do this? How did?
I only have a motion to close the warrant.
So that's separate than this, so Evria?
I would just say, um, that, uh, move to amend Section 5.5 and Section, I'm sorry, move to amend Section 5.1 and Section 5.5.2, um, of the charter as discussed.
Okay, so this, this, well, hold on, I'm gonna ask public comment still. Anyone else on Zoom, final chance? Maddie?
Nobody online.
Charter changes? Okay. Um, so, um, Evria just went over, um, the, the changes, um, I think it's more, I think we just, so clarification, it was, um, legal residence, right? So we're moving the word legal, and the other?
It was, um, legal address, um, and we're, we're, um, we're striking it, so it just says address.
And then the other one is what Evria, Sorban, no?
The other one is we're removing that last block of text in, um, 5.1, which says that if the town manager provides notice of his term, of his resignation within a, a period of time, then you can give him additional pay.
Okay, so we're striking?
We're striking that, yeah.
We don't have to do anything, Karen, it's just those are the two that we're getting changed.
And, and, yeah, and, and you, you can just vote to, um, recommend those changes, and then when you close the warrant, you'll close it with those changes reflected in the article.
Okay.
So moved. That gonna fly?
Yeah, that's good enough. Yeah, that's good. That's good enough.
As you say, it's good, it's good. Um, so any discussion? Oh, wait, does anyone second?
Can I second?
Yes, yes. So seconded by Karen. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, so all those in favor? Four zero. All right, so that squares away, let me just see what we said, the agenda topic item. Um, all right, so that's, yep, so that was the 8:30, so the session on that and the changes that we just made now. Um, so thank you again, Jesse, Jonathan, and Jeff for being here tonight, um, I appreciate it, and then, uh, Duro Paul or something like that will go out in the future organizing a subsequent meeting before November town meeting.
See you later.
Thank you. All right, so nine o'clock, uh, Evria again. Uh, potential indication of the rule of necessity under the conflict of inter-sloth to allow board action on warrant in, uh, snow removal bylaw article, page 344 in the packet. So Evria, you can just give us a brief overview of why we have to do this, and then we will take subsequent steps.
Right, so, um, as was alluded to at the last select board meeting, three select board members, um, have a financial interest in one of the proposed articles on the town meeting warrant, specifically the proposed snow removal bylaw, due to the fact that they have a financial interest in property located within the district. So because of that, under Section 19 of the state ethics law, um, those three members, Chris Haley, Carlo Bachi, and Karen Rose Gillis, are precluded from participating in any matter involving that article. But because three members of the five-member board are precluded, the board doesn't have a quorum that can vote to close the warrant. So the board is permitted to, in my opinion, is permitted to use what's called the rule of necessity. This is a judicially created doctrine that recognizes that in some circumstances, public officials, um, who otherwise would have to refuse themselves may participate because the board, the body, has a legal duty to act. And so the rule can be invoked when the board has this legal duty to act, and the board is only, is the only body that can act on the matter, and you can't. is only, is the only body that can act on the matter, and you can't achieve a quorum due to these conflicts. And, um, here you are the only body legally empowered to close the warrant and call town meeting. And so it's my opinion that the board can, can act notwithstanding the conflict. There is a process for invoking the rule. I've outlined it in the letter. Um, a non-conflicted member, so in this case it would have to be Karen Herrick, needs to invoke the rule by stating that there are not a sufficient number of members to act. Then each board member who has a conflict needs to briefly disclose their conflict. Um, the board will need to recognize that the legal requirement to act, here it's, um, general law, chapter thirty-nine, section ten, as well as your charter and general bylaws, and then, um, and then assert that you are invoking the rule. So those are the steps that, that would need to be taken. Now, what's a little bit tricky about the rule of necessity is that if the board has a discretionary function, you can't use the rule of necessity to allow the board to take that discretionary action. So here, you're legally obligated to put the bylaw article on the warrant because it was submitted to you by another public body in town, and, um, you are legally obligated to close the warrant and call the meeting. You are not required by law to actually discuss the article, um, and you are not required by law to vote to make a recommendation on the article. So my, my advice is that the three members that are conflicted vote to close the warrant and vote to call the town meeting, but to the extent there's going to be any discussion of the bylaw article, that they let, they sit in the audience while Jesse or someone from the bylaw committee makes the presentation. It's a little bit awkward because there'll only be Karen, um, Herrick at the select board table, and then once that presentation is done, the members can return to the select board table. And this was all outlined in the public letter.
Carlo has a question. Iria, thank you for that, and, you know, we, we had a phone call, and correct me if I'm wrong, once we go sit in the audience, and if Karen will be the pseudo-chair for that item and calls for public comment, we can speak as residents, correct?
So it's a little, it's a little awkward because it's essentially like the board is taking a recess because there's no quorum, but, you know, we are trying to give the bylaw committee an opportunity to present the article, um, and so this was sort of the best case scenario we could think of. You never lose your rights as, uh, under the First Amendment to speak on your own behalf, um, just because you've been elected to the position of select board, so you can always talk during public comment for yourself.
Correct. Thanks. Okay, okay. Karen?
I was just going to say, um, okay, so, um, you're not in a town meeting, but the other three are, so I didn't know whether we even needed to really have any discussion tonight because there will be a full discussion at town meeting, and because we are obligated to put forward, um, warrant articles brought through our committee, so if, and we're not going, we wouldn't have been voting our opinions anyway, so I didn't, it could be, we just get it done, we get it on the warrant, we close the warrant, and that's it.
To that extent, I would say the gray area is that we take public comment after every agenda item, and I would not want to lose the consistency that we always have, so.
True.
That's kind of, but it, the ball is in your court at that time, so. All right, so Iria, so the next step is that one by one we'll say what our conflict is, we will walk over there, and then Karen has to go first.
Okay. So Karen will first say, uh, we need to invoke the rule of necessity because we don't have enough members that can participate.
The Reading select board needs to, um, invoke the rule of necessar, excuse me, the rule of necessity because we currently have a sufficient, we currently have an insufficient number of members necessary to take a valid vote as a result of disqualification of certain members having conflicts of interest regarding the bylaw or regarding this particular warrant article. And so in your notes, we can permit each board member who has a conflict to disclose the relevant facts that create the conflict. I, I don't see that they need to, if, I don't know if you want to comment on that.
They do. All conflicted board members must disclose their conflict during this meeting. So this is just an opportunity, point two is just saying now it's the, the time where you're permitting them to go ahead and do that.
Okay, so, who'd like to go first?
I will go first. Thank you, Karen. Um, I own a business at Two Haven Street, which is in the Smart Overlake gr, uh, district, which, uh, this, um, bylaw would be taking place, and that is essentially it.
Yep, that's great, Chris.
Then I leave right, Iria?
Yes, I live.
No, you can say, Chris.
Well, audience, right?
Well, only if there's going to be a presentation from the bylaw committee.
All right, I'll, I'll wait.
So I am the trustee and live at four ninety-four Main Street, which is also in the Smack Road District, and have a conflict.
Thank you. Karen?
I live at sixty-nine Lundy Street. I live downtown, and I have a conflict.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so should we then ask if the bylaw committee would like to make a presentation on this warrant article?
So then Karen, you need to say that the legal requirement that needs board action here is closing the warrant.
Okay, so the select board needs to close the warrant article. Should I mention that at that point, um, charter and bylaws, as you outlined?
Mm-hmm, yes, please.
Okay, um, so the legal requirement necessitating the board take this action at this meeting in this case would be Reading Charter two point thirteen and two point fourteen, and Reading general bylaws, two point one point four, um, GLC thirty-nine S ten. And, um, as the non-conflicted member at this time, I will be asserting the rule of necessity as the select board is the only legal body who can close the warrant for the town of Reading.
Correct. So the, the rule has been invoked, the board can now vote to close the warrant, to the extent you want to accept public comment on the warrant as a whole, you can do that now, to the extent that Jesse is going to make a presentation, Jesse can do that now.
Okay, why don't we ask if the bylaw committee would might, like to make a presentation for us?
Um, Jesse Arnold here as chair of the bylaw committee. Um, we, I can certainly tell you about the bylaw, we have a presentation, um, we kind of, we're not advised to actually give the presentation at this point, um, so I don't have it like loaded to the correct people to give the whole spiel. Um, we actually just ran a public meeting on that tonight. I would encourage anybody to come to our public meeting next Wednesday, um, it'll be at the library, library. Um, I can certainly tell you about the bylaw if you would like to know more, um, but I also can recognize that it's nine thirty at night, and if people would like to kind of move on and don't really have anything to say, I can also do that.
How about, um, a quick, a quick summary?
Quick summary, I can do that.
Last week, but just to be consistent.
If she gives a summary, we have to leave though, Iria, right?
Yeah, so if she's going to give a summary, you'd have to sit in the audience, so I think that, um, it's up to, I would say it's up to Karen, um, but if the intention is to just move on, um, we can just move on to a vote.
Okay, well, I think it would be good since she's inviting the public to come to her meeting to just quickly summarize why they might want to come to learn more about this warrant article. Thank you. Nine, thank you.
I will keep this brief, um, being mindful of the fact that there's still things on the agenda. This came to bylaw committee in twenty twenty-two from Mary Parr in a citizen petition at town meeting. Um, we have been working on it since then, we have surveyed what a lot of other communities are doing, including some of our peer communities, that being North Reading, Wilmington, Wakefield, um, all have snow removal bylaws, and so kind of our purpose of this is to, um, make the bylaw, I mean, make the bylaw, make the downtown, um, something that can be navigated throughout the winter by all members of the community, make it accessible, um, especially being cognizant of those who may have mobility challenges, be in wheelchairs, um, you know, because recognizing that things can get hazardous, and we want people to feel like they can equally access all parts of our downtown.
Okay, thank you. So, um, usually we just have board members make comments. My only comment is to maybe, thank you, and, and just ask when your bylaw meeting is normally scheduled so that people can join in.
Sure, our next meeting, uh, so we had one tonight, as I mentioned, that was fully remote, we have one next Wednesday at seven thirty. Um, that is a hybrid meeting, Zoom and in-person, um, it's going to be at the library.
That's September twenty-something?
September twenty, let me tell you, twenty-fourth.
September twenty-fourth, seven thirty in the library, bylaw committee meeting to discuss the side, snow removal sidewalk bylaw, something like that. Okay, thank you. All right, that's my only question. Um, are, are there any questions from the public in the room? I see one, um, Mr. Haley, could you go to the podium, tell us where you live?
Chris Haley, seventy-one Tennyson Road, I, uh, just walked here. Uh, so my, uh, question, concern, or maybe Jesse can answer it in the future, is how did this get whittled down to just the, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, of course, uh, how did this get whittled down to only the downtown area? Because as you mentioned, um, somebody in a wheelchair, mobility issues, obviously that exists everywhere. Um, and, uh, I'm wondering how that anywhere near schools wasn't taken into account with this at all? Because obviously kids are going to have to walk into the street, let people go through their sidewalks, why are we allowing this to only be, um, prudent to the members in the downtown area who more likely than not already have things built into their contracts and leases, um, for being shoveled? So my property at Two Haven, it's made into a lease, I, this isn't really going to obviously affect me. Uh, to the extent of that, I know in the bylaw it says up to fourteen inches or whatever scenario you're transpiring, outside of Two Haven is massive, that's going to be like, I don't know, eight feet that's out there, and they do the entire thing. Um, I feel as if this is going to actually, uh, if it was me, I'd say, well, now I'm reducing it to this small section because you decided to force this on me, so now I'm going to do less than I was doing before. So I wonder if you can just, um, answer why we didn't cover schools, because it's super important, obviously, and how does this affect people that might be already shoveling and doing all this, and now making it, you know, kind of, um, a, a smaller area than what was already being done before?
Sure, um, so I can start with this.
We don't really respond to public comment.
Oh, sorry.
But, I mean, so she's got questions, and if any of your other committee members are on board, it certainly is something that they can be ready to address next Wednesday.
Yeah, so if Jesse can just get back to, um, not me or whatever, I just, that's kind of my concern is that, um, like I said, it's, it's kids, I don't know why we do the safe routes to schools and everything, have a safer to school bylaw, whatever those, um, kind of restrictions that you did over there, same thing. Why didn't we do that? But believe me, I, I, my, my, I don't want to say my fire with this, but in, in two thousand twenty-one, before I joined the board, I was standing in my living room, and a resident asked me a question over the phone, I thought I was going to get hit with crazy questions over who I want for a library position and all this other stuff, and this person asked me point blank, what do you feel about shoveling and, uh, out in front of my house? Should you be able to force me to do that? And I said, well, I, I do it myself, so I don't see why not, and he told me, I wish I knew what it was at this time, he said, you don't have any right to tell me what to do in front of my house. It is not your decision to make, and I remember that to this day. So that's kind of where I'm going with this. So Jesse, you have my questions, and I'll probably join next week or whatever you guys just discussed.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Haley. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to comment? Okay, is there anybody online that would like to make a public comment?
Not seeing any hands.
Thank you, Maddie. Okay, so, so we can.
Yeah.
So they can rejoin us and we can close the warrant?
Correct.
So can we go back to our normal rules, or do you want me to read them?
Correct, yes, correct.
Move to close the subsequent town meeting warrant consisting of eleven articles to take place on November tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Four zero. Thank you, and thanks, I don't even think I can thank you online, so. Um, so moving on. Uh, Matt, thanks. Nine twenty-five, discuss and vote to authorize town to participate in settlement of national opioid litigations with Purdue, Sacklers, and secondary opioid manufacturers. Three ninety-one of the packet. Matt, did you do this with Iria or what's?
Sure, yeah, so I, I did include, uh, not only the settlement packages and the, the sign-on packages in the, um, in the packet, which are pretty cumbersome, but I did include a memo that I worked on with Iria. And so I, I was expecting to get received DocuSign instructions for the town to participate in and, um, in release on, on both of these cases. One would be, um, Purdue Sackler settlement, the second participation form and release of secondary manufacturers. Um, we've already received, as you know, opioid money in the past, this doesn't jeopardize that at all, that these are separate funds. But the bottom line is Reading stands to receive an estimated eighty-two thousand dollars and change over the next fifteen years from the Purdue Sackler settlement, and also an extra sixteen thousand dollars over ten years from the secondary manufacturers. Um, this would be used, uh, mostly by the coalition, um, to prevent, you know, any sort of drug addictions and, um, drug misuse. Uh, it's still conditioned on a few things, like bankruptcy court has to approve, uh, the bankruptcy and whatnot, but the more towns that actually join this, uh, these, these, um, litigation matters, the more we may end up getting on of it. I actually spoke to the attorney general's office, um, directly and to Iria on this. So I'm asking you to give me the permission to do that, um, they have to be done by the end of the month, so there's still some time, but, you know, I, I, if you allow this, I plan to execute these documents this week. Um, you know, I've been getting a lot of questions from the attorney general's office and others about who we're going to do this, so I wanted to make sure it was on the agenda.
Board members, any questions? Carlo, I just have a quick one, an easy one. I would think that if more people joined the suit, there'd be less money to give out.
Um, it would seem that way, but it depends on the numbers and cities and towns and the degree to settle. Um, if there's greater participation, um, there, there's a more likelihood for a good result for it. So that's what the attorney general's office has told me on it. It would seem like there's more of a pie to split up, but, um, to get the maximum payments, um, I, I think that the way they explained it to me, and I put it in the bottom, the memo, the number of cities that are able to settle, uh, would increase, uh, with, with greater participation, so. I, I, again, this is what they tell me, the attorney's office, so.
So I guess that my interpretation would have been the same as Carlo's, like this doesn't make sense, like I just got four dollars and eighty-nine cents from some Facebook settlement or something, like the more people do it, the less you get. But I think the catch with this is, the more people that are willing to settle, they're going to have less individual lawsuits to.
Yeah, that, and that's true.
Okay, so that is why.
And if we didn't go with this universal settlement, we would have the option to sue them ourselves, but that would be a lot of money down the road and a lot of work. So the easiest and best way is to, um, to join, and like I said, the estimates came from the attorney general's office on how, how much we stand to, to gain over the next few years, uh, so I would recommend that we do it.
All right, anyone from the public? Online, Maddie, anybody?
No hands online.
All right, Karen, do I have a motion?
Move to authorize the town manager to execute all release and participation forms necessary for the town to participate in the settlement of national opioid litigations with one Purdue and the Sacklers, and two, the secondary opioid manufacturers, Alvegen, Amneal, AproT, Hikma, and Ivar, Mylan, Sun, and Sidus.
Second.
Thank you.
I've never said.
You can just share, it's allowed, though.
Spent all last year seconding everything.
It wasn't allowed, it's allowed.
All right, so seconded by me, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Four zero.
Good, thank you.
All right, so moving on, we are catching up. Nine thirty-five, discussing lease amendment and memorandum of understanding regarding people on the re, Reading Center for Active Laboring, Recall, and People Ball Courts with Reading Ice Arena Authority and authorizes select board member to engage in negotiations on behalf of the board. Uh, so who was going to kick that off? Matt Jane, did you have, is there an actual amend memorandum of understanding, or where are we?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have, I didn't include anything in the packet because we don't really have a, a final, anywhere near a final draft on that yet. We, we started working on it, you know. We started working on it, you know, and I know the Select Board wants to have a member appointed to join us in negotiations and whatnot. So I kind of wait. Once I knew that, could put everything on hold until we have that member on board. Jane has been working on it as well, she may have a little bit of an update on it. But we've gone to CPDC, they want, you know, before they move on their matter, they wanna make sure our lease is in place. And memorandum, the way we've envisioned it is, there was two documents. The memorandum of understanding would be the actual cooperation memo between us and Burbank. The other would be just to deal with liability issues. So there's two separate documents that we were working in that direction. So, Jane, you can add one more.
Sure. CPDC has been very clear that they would like to see some sort of a shared parking arrangement. And the thinking was we would go with a memorandum of understanding that outlines what that shared parking agreement would be. The town has asked CPDC for a waiver for five spots for the recalc portion of the site. CPDC believes we need five additional spots. Rather than design them into the site and then reopen conversation with Concom, who is closed, we also proposed a shared parking agreement with Burbank to accommodate those five spots, but then also overflow for large events and for pickleball in the rear portion in the gravel lot. So that was a proposal back when, to two projects, they're still separate, when they were totally separate votes. Because if recalc didn't pass, there would be no parking lot built, there would be no road improvement or ring road. It would not include any of those improvements due to cost. And so Burbank was amenable to parking in the gravel lot, but they requested a limit of liability that was an amendment that could be added to their lease. So because of CPDC being very strict, they would like to see a shared parking agreement, and the Select Board's desire for a voice in any conversation vis-à-vis the lease or a shared parking agreement, we are here tonight to ask you to appoint somebody to do that work with us so that we can go forward and engage Burbank in these conversations. We've given them a heads-up on these matters and a draft amendment to the lease, but then we stopped all back and forth on anything pending this conversation tonight. So we are very hopeful. We don't, we would like to move as quickly as we can with Burbank. And the Select Board's designee, Mr. McFadden, has been very receptive to phone calls and so forth. So we are hopeful that we can move quickly with Burbank Arena Authority so that we can satisfy CPDC's request for an understanding of the parking arrangements.
So just to clarify, because I heard you say, and it's conflicting with other information we heard earlier today, the five parking spots are for recalc.
The town is seeking a waiver from CPDC for five spots at recalc.
Not the pickleball courts.
The pickle, that's correct. The waiver is for the five spots at recalc. It's a very detailed, convoluted process, and we've spent a lot of time as staff on it. And so it's, we wanna be as clear as possible, but it's definitely, there's a lot going on, for sure.
Carlo, I just have a question for Jane. So I think, to me, it's two separate things, but CPDC would grant the waiver with a satisfactory shared parking agreement.
Correct. They want, they wanna understand very clearly that we are providing for parking. And I think that that's fair with the pickleball parking. We know that there can be a demand for pickleball. There's plenty of space in the gravel lot behind the arena that is very rarely used. If you see any of the images we showed previously, there's vegetation growing in the gravel because nobody ever parks over there. So there is ample parking there, but there is the desire to have assurances that that parking will be available. And we agree with that. We want to work with Burbank, who's been great to work with.
All right, that makes sense. And since they have a mic on, I've been the longest-serving liaison since elected for Reading Ice Arena, so I would like to be the designee.
Any other comments? Karen?
Yeah, sure. So I'll preface this by saying that I've been liaison for the Ice Arena for three years. And I appreciate you coming to us. This is a select board contract, and residents are very concerned that the demand for pickleball will cause chaos in the recalc center, and the projects were separated. So, you know, I foresee that we're already gonna have an issue, where we're gonna have to police those parking spots because they're gonna be the closest and the nicest. Well, unless you go and pave it, but we'll determine that later. But they'll still be maybe the closest, so I think, I think I foresee an issue that we're gonna have to manage. And manage folks using the pickleball courts' expectations. A lot of those will be out-of-town folks that they need to follow the signage, and we've talked about signage. So, but beyond that, I, we've attempted to have good operational meetings with the Burbank Ice Arena Authority, and I'm gonna be honest, they have come to some meetings, and they haven't even understood their own lease. They haven't understood that we own the building and the plant, except for maybe the Zamboni, some things that they would take with them. And, and I am extremely, extremely concerned that in 2011, town meeting specifically said, and we have the minutes, which you can include in our next packet, that no less than annually, the Burbank Ice Arena shall make a rent payment. And I have unfortunately found since, you know, Mr. Burbank's passing, to your point earlier about RCTV, Carlo, there's been no, they're a 501(c) organization, there's no fundraising, there's no sponsoring, they're, and most importantly all, there is very much an inconsistency in the rent payments that we get for four and a half acres and a large building, which would cost $40 million to replace. The tour we had a couple weeks ago showed that while the rink looked great, what the public-facing spaces, to me, looked clean. I'd like to see the ladies room painted, because it's kind of dark and scary in there. But some of the locker rooms had been redone, and the boards were beautiful. But what we saw, the real money is in the plant and equipment, and a lot of that equipment dates to when the rink was built. And so what I have asked for as a liaison for a number of years is a capital plan. I have never seen a capital plan. I have gotten pushback. Why am I asking for a capital plan? So, you know, that's one example that I've had a very different and frustrating experience with our designee. And so rent, a capital plan, I guess the point is, the point is, if we are gonna open up this negotiation with Burbank, I can guarantee they're gonna ask for something, and I don't know what it is. And so that's fine. We had the Select Board, with some different members, had asked them, before we signed the 10-year renewal, to talk about this lease, and what, much like we're doing with RCTV, about how we can make it better. Are we serving the needs of the community? Are we serving the needs of an aging building, which is an important asset to the community? And that, at that time, we were told by their former attorney, Bradley, nope, take it or leave it. And that is in fact the way the lease is written, and it was reviewed by Town Council. And it is take it or leave it, and the Select Board took it. And since then, I think we've had one rent payment. When we had our operational update, you know, there was no mention of rent. And then a week later, we're hearing about record revenues. Well, you know, I'd just like to see, I wanna know that the member of this board who is willing to have these conversations with them is going to make sure that we focus on things that are really important at this juncture in time, in addition to the parking, the fact that we need rent from them. We are facing an override. I'll tell you my liaison report about, you know, the information coming from the state. And we heard, what did we hear tonight? About our trash contract. So rent, 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 this is a rent contract, it is very important. I'm not entirely comfortable, Carlo, that you would do that. I, I would absolutely be, if I was the services designee, and I'm not saying I have to, but this is the binder that I have amassed over the past few years, so I know what they're spending, I know why they're not paying us rent, and that is because they're spending too much on salaries. And I'm concerned that, I have other concerns, I won't get into it. I need someone from this board who's gonna come back and make sure that we aren't just giving to them without getting something in return. And, and we were not given an opportunity to really clarify the rent at the signing of our last lease. We were told, nope, take it or leave it. And again, that is the way the contract was strangely written back in 1992 or 1994, so. And, and none of my interactions, by the way, with our designee have been rude or pointed or accusatory, or have I ever asked for his removal? Nor have I asked for the general manager to be removed. And yet, I've gotten a lot of public pushback. So I would just, I've been drawing these parallels between how we're working with RCTV and the successes and the challenges we have there. And, and as one, a member of the public said earlier tonight, there's a lot of similarities. We can make this collaborative. Those are, that board is composed of residents, a 501(c) three organization. There shouldn't be this hostility. And, and I have some ideas of how maybe it could go away, but anyway. So I'm open to other Select Board members serving this role. I would be happy to do it. That's all I'm gonna borrow it for you with, thanks.
Karen, do you have anything?
Well, I'd like to be the designee. This is gonna be a fun night, won't it? I don't have any skin in the game at all, other than my boys play hockey. And I feel like maybe a fresh set of eyes might be helpful. And I don't play pickleball, so there's no conflict there. And I think, I think that would be a good choice. I think Melissa's done a great job with RCTV, everything I've heard and the documents we've seen. And I think that she's got a very neutral approach to RCTV, and I think I would be a very neutral approach to this as well. So not, not knowing how large it may get, because, you know, we've gone from just dealing with a few parking spaces to dealing with rent and changing the whole thing. So I feel like there's a really big curve here on where it could go, so I think I would do a good job.
Yeah, I might add, I'm a little disappointed that the agenda item strictly just says parking. Because I'm one of five board members, and I made a point that we have this opportunity, and this is a valuable community resource, and it's our job to do the best we can for the community members. So I have to say I'm a little disappointed it still came up as parking. And on the one hand, I can understand, we don't want, I don't wanna slow down pickleball, and I certainly don't wanna get in the way of recalc, those are critically important projects. And I think it's wonderful already that the board at Burbank is saying they're willing to come forward and talk to us. And, and our designees said some very positive things the other night. And the question is, just seeing, not just saying it, but doing it, letting, talking to Sharon, she can be very helpful with the capital planning. And I can roll tape and go back to the other things that he promised. And I think that's just really, I think it's, I appreciate him coming here and making that gesture and committing to going forward. So I don't know what else Burbank might need. So, but it's not gonna be just like, oh, the relationship has not been, oh, you guys need parking? Sure, it's, it's, no, there's something else going on.
The agenda item does say lease amendment in, just so you know.
Thank you, good. I just wanna make sure, because, yeah, good, thank you.
Correct. That was what I was gonna point out, Carlo, is that it's written the way that it is. And you seem to have an issue with it. Half the items I put on the agenda is how they are, which is obviously your right, and I have my right to put them on here. But this agenda item specifically on here exists for one reason only, and that is because of you. Otherwise, this already would have happened. They would have already had the lease, everything would have already taken place.
So I think you might not understand our role-
I perfectly understand our-
Signers of the contract.
I understand our-
We are the landlord.
I understand that, Karen. But we would have been voting on something tonight, and CPDC would have been moving forward if you didn't consistently make negative comments-
No, 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 it's about process. It's about process. And see, that is why CPDC said we can't act. You haven't gone through the process, you haven't gotten the Select Board's buy-in. And they're correct to do that. And, and they'll be the first ones to tell us when we forget to include them in the process. And they, I've been, my wrist has been slapped, I've done it, it happens.
I agree with you. I spoke to Heather, especially like I mentioned at the last meeting, and this specifically came up too, when I spoke to her on the phone, about this agreement. And I said that it was pretty much a done deal.
Well, that was inappropriate.
It's not inappropriate because, because they would present it-
Yeah, this is on videotape.
Good. Because they would present it, and we would say yes or no. That's the way this goes. I don't make decisions in a vacuum. I am one vote, Karen. It would have got proposed to us, everyone would have been happy, and we all would have moved on.
That's not how that works, if you're doing this job-
It is, when we take a, oh, I, yeah, I don't take it seriously, Karen. I've done, I've done more in this town for the last four years than you've done in a week.
Okay, that's so funny.
Town, town, town.
We can talk about people's approaches to including the board in this negotiation, because I will say with Burbank, I appreciated the memo we got today. Yeah, I was begging you for an executive session. I would have liked to have had some feedback earlier in the process. So we have another opportunity with this designee and this contract reopening to keep the board more engaged.
But can't you see, like, I take a step back in the RCTV thing and said that I could not be the person to negotiate. I understood that I couldn't do it. I understood that. I don't see how you don't have the need to also understand that you cannot do it either.
On what grounds?
You are, you have an entire binder. I've never had a binder.
I've been doing my job.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, like, you have to, you have to sometimes just take a step back. That's clearly what I did and said, you know what? I can't vote him, I can't be the person to negotiate on RCTV, because it would have went the way that it went. And everyone knows the way it would go. And the same thing here, you have to take a step back and realize that it can't be you. And it's your purview to say that, yes, I wanna do it, and these are the reasons why I agree with you. But sometimes you're gonna take a step back and realize it ain't the good thing.
Other Select Board members doing it, as long as, as long as we make sure that we are doing what we need to do for the residents.
I've, I've already scaled this out in my mind, and I already know which direction it's going, which is why I'm wondering if, is Evria still on the line? My chance, I think she's dropped off at the select board. All right, so I'd have to ask her, my heart, but I'd go after that.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Yeah, okay.
So Karen is right where she has a binder, and she's been following this closely, right? But I think we all forget that that is a lease, that is an ironclad lease. And when they had the option to renew, there was no back and forth.
Right.
Unless they agreed to it.
Correct.
Right? So that's a separate issue. That's a lease that you can go to any court, that lease is binding. Now Burbank is willing to open up that lease when they're in the midst of it. We're not renegotiating, I should say. It could be renegotiated in certain terms, but it's not like a commercial space where my lease is up, let's renegotiate in terms. Their lease is current, their lease is not up. So they don't have to do anything. But they're doing the right thing because of the senior center and because of pickleball. And I hope you didn't imply because I play pickleball, I have a conflict. You just said I don't play pickleball, correct?
People could perceive there being a conflict.
Pickleball is played by millions of people.
You're right, but there's not many people on the board. So I just think, at a first look, people are obviously gonna say, pickleball parking, they just go that way, you know that.
And they're entitled to, but I have never-
I wouldn't say whether you would negotiate in bad faith just because you play pickleball or teach pickleball. That's not what I was leading to. I'm just trying to be as neutral as possible, and pickleball doesn't come into my world. People are automatically gonna go that way, they're gonna go that way with you as opposed to me.
Right, I agree with that statement. But pickleball is a very big deal in this community and elsewhere. And given where it is now, and most of us, all of us play doubles, so that's four people on a court, you come separately. So the parking obviously is not adequate where it is now. They're parking in that little tiny parking lot, they're parking on Harrison, and they're parking in that five or six spots on Salem Street.
And they're parking on private property, according to a resident.
Every now and then, every now and then, maybe. I, I've never had, no, no, I can walk and ride a bike. So I, I have never once, since I learned the sport, advocated for myself- So I, I have never once, since I learned the sport, advocated for myself for, for teaching it in Reading, playing in Reading, yes, I play pickleball, just like, I don't know how many hundreds of people in this town. So this is a parking agreement, and that's why I asked you in the question about the waiver. So the waiver, they're not asking for five more spots, they're asking for a waiver, because that's what waivers are. So this is all encompassing, even though there are two separate projects. And I think Nelson Burbank did a great thing, as most of the community. And I think the rink from getting the behind the scenes look is doing a great job, given the age of the building, sure they're gonna have the challenges in the future, and they'll put money aside for that. This is a town asset, not many towns have a rink. So I wanna be part of a n- negotiation that benefits both sides, us and them. If they, I don't know what they want either, they might want, who knows what, right, build a second ice rink, I don't know. So whatever it is, let's, let's hear it, and it's gonna be brought back to the whole board. I mean, traditionally as a board, before you joined, we've kinda picked the liaison to do the negotiating, doesn't have to be that way, but that's been our tradition. Um, well, not tradition, but that's what we've done. With the, with the, this is three of us here that have been there for the past four years, and Karen and I longer. So I'm not saying we should do that, but I would like to do it, and it's up to the board.
Yeah, so the end result is, no matter what, like I said, this comes back to the full board anyway. So Carlo, Karen, Karen, me, we can all renegotiate that they're gonna get, you know, seven more buildings and, uh, snoo- uh, Snoopy snow cone maker machine. It doesn't matter unless all of us vote on it anyway. It, it doesn't get passed the full board, so it doesn't matter who any one of us talked to beforehand, anything, it comes before all of us. If we spoke to three people and then did that kind of way, that's, uh, uh, obviously a no-no. Um, so, uh, that's why I was asking Iria if she was, if she was still on, because in my mind, when this goes two, 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 um, if I just can do it regardless, because nothing prevents me from working with Jane or whatever behind the scenes. And if it has to come to that, and it does, I don't think there's gonna be.
Chris, I need to, I need to point a border, Chris, have you looked at our policies? Like, the chair doesn't have special powers beyond setting the agenda based on feedback from other board members, not based on solely on your preference, that's not how any chair has ever done it, and that's not what it says in our policies. And the other thing you need to do is, and, and I will be respectful, kneel to the chair, is that you, you run the meeting according to accepted, um, policies that we have and Robert's rule of order, that is it. Besides that, there are five members, and anytime team members want something to happen, that that goes on, for example, that goes on the agenda, regardless of how you feel or how the town manager feels.
That is incorrect.
That is not incorrect, that is in our policy.
It is in our policy, and you violated that policy when I added the official town website in two thousand twenty-one, Carlo and I asked for it to be added, you didn't add it, and verbatim, from the town manager at the time, I was told it will not be added to the agenda until another chair is selected. Feel free to deny that, Karen.
I don't know what you're talking about, but you have already, like.
I don't forget anything, that's the problem.
Anyway, this is like, we're getting off topic.
It's very easy just to say it never happened, but people can check the minutes.
I'm living through it, every week, you change our policies, you change how we run our meeting, you don't ask us whether we wanna have public comment all the time, you just do it. And I'm telling you, that's disrespectful, it's not our policy.
Can we move on, please?
I'd love to move on, yeah.
I'm still waiting for the first open meeting law violation, let me know when it comes, I'll be waiting. Until then, I will run the meeting how I like, I will meet Matt with Matt and Jane.
No, 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 that's not how this works. This is a board of five people, why are you so disrespectful?
I'm not being disrespectful, I said, whatever the scenario is, whoever is appointed to doing this, or if they're not, it would come back to the full board, it always comes back to the full board, nobody ever supersedes the full board.
The requirement, the, the request is to be involved, and, and, and so I appreciate staff now listening to us.
I put this on the agenda, so what happens when this goes two, 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 two? We just say, you know what, we're gonna just let this, you know, go to another town. That's what you wanna do? You wanna delay pickleball and recalc and all this other stuff because of this? Or we'll go to the.
Motion to appoint Karen Rose Gillis as the designee for us.
We didn't public comment first, please. I, I'm consistent, anyone in the room, remember, anyone online, Mary?
Yes, Karen Janowski has her hand raised.
Karen Janowski, name and address, two minutes, please, thank you.
Hi, Karen Janowski, uh, thirty Zedalia Circle. There's so much to say, um, this has been a ten-year-long process. Mike and Judy Coleman started this ten years ago. We have lost Mike Coleman, who wanted to see this to fruition, tragically, he is lost to us. And he is, he and Judy are the reason why this is even something that is coming before the board. And I hope in honor of his memory, we can move forward for the best of the community. While I understand Karen Rose Gillis', I do believe Karen Rose Gillis can be neutral, but I do believe that this particular, um, agenda item requires someone who understands pickleball, understands the uniqueness of this in our community, and has knowledge of it. I think Karen Herrick has demonstrated, um, her opinions that would not necessarily favor a quick resolution of working on the parking, um, agreement, and I think we have to move on, we have to get this done. A two-two vote really does concern me, and so, Chris, I am happy to hear that you are ready to move on, because this is something that needs to be done now. This is important to many members of the community, especially those of us who are sixty-plus, and I, um, ask that you would respectfully reach agreement. And if you can't, I look forward to, Chris, you working with Jane and Matt and Burbank Ice Arena Authority to resolve this as quickly as possible, thank you.
Thank you, Karen, anybody else online?
Nobody else.
All right, are we ready for the vote? Who should we do first? She had a motion already, Karen, I said, okay. Oh, what was the motion?
We have a second?
Second, who was it again?
I, I made a motion that Karen Rose Gillis be our designee for this next law, for our negotiation.
That's the motion, uh, seconded by Carlo, any discussion? See, none, all those in favor? Karen, uh, all those opposed? Two to two. Next, I will, uh, make a motion to nominate Carla Bachi to serve, uh, uh, in, in the lease amendment memorandum of discussion at the Ice Arena.
Second.
Seconded by Karen. Uh, any discussion? See, none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Two to two. Any other motions? Next agenda item. All right, uh, just.
Good discussion.
Yes, uh, just consult with Iria and Matt and see if what I just said is possible.
I will, I will.
I believe it is, and I have, uh.
Go ahead, Chris, try it, we can, we can move it up to an earlier meeting, we get two members who just request it, you get to do that.
All right, uh, moving on to nine forty-five, brief update on status of Montessori Mulberry School page four oh six of the packet.
And so your point of order, you requested this, just, nobody else on the board requested this, you, you put this on here.
So I put this on the agenda because, uh, I'll give my input, not that, uh, I shy away from giving my opinion, but the reason that this was put on the agenda was, A, uh, as you can tell on the packet, there is Sean Brand's memo that the school committee did not get answers to any of the questions that they asked last time, which is not in our purview, and I completely agree with that. But what is in our purview is on their website, they were still saying that they were doing, um, they were having the school starting next week in the, uh, uh, town of Reading, uh, Milet Song, I'm sorry, Materick Cabin area, it's, sorry, MBTA stuff, um, that they were still doing it in there, so they were advertising as if they were still coming here. So I asked Matt and said, Matt, do we have an agreement, do we have this, that? He said, we have nothing, nothing's in writing, we haven't done anything, Materick Cabin's closed, we don't have anything. And I said, they can't be advertising that they're here, uh, in Reading when they're not, and there's no agreement, because they put it up the day after our meeting here, that we had our meeting discussing this, they put it up the day after that, that Town of Reading, um, Materick Cabin area, et cetera, on their About Us page. So I said to Matt, listen, we can't have this on here, this happened in Stonem, the same thing, that the Stonem Board had to get involved, and ask them to take stuff off their website, there's meeting minutes for it, I don't wanna end up becoming that person again, please reach out to them and see if they can just change it on their website, it's a sentence. And as I explained earlier, Karen, at five thirty today, they finally changed it. An hour and a half before this meeting, they finally changed it. So that is why I was on the agenda, I told Matt, listen, it's go, it has to go in the packet, if these people aren't gonna get back to us and return phone calls, we have a certain time that we have to do things, uh, for the public. And like, listen, he, he made phone calls, he did whatever, they weren't getting back to him, and then here we are at five thirty, you spoke to her or whatever, she's sick, unfortunately unable to make it, um, towards the end of this, so that's why I was gonna let her speak in the beginning if she had to, to maybe give some color on things, but the end result, it is now moot, it is removed from the pack, it is removed from the website, so we are all good, there's nothing to vote on, there's nothing else to go on beyond that, but this was still an item because up until an hour and a half prior to the meeting, it was still up there. All right, next agenda item, good, good.
May, may I make a comment?
Yes.
Um, the way you just described that, and, um, thank you for sharing with that, I am, I'm concerned that that is your approach to dealing with, um, a business that is trying to start up in Reading. It feels like our select board agenda was weaponized, and I would not agree with us treating small businesses that way. I, when I have a concern with a small business, I asked Matt if he would address it, Matt sent staff out there, changes were made, and I didn't have to be a bully about it, I would suggest we not use our agenda as a weapon in the future to bully small businesses, for any business.
I, I'm not sure where in this entire discussion, you just got that impression from it, but Matt reached out, just like you said, that you would want somebody to reach out, he reached out multiple times, got no answer. What do you want him to do, what do you want us to do? They had that they're at the Town of Reading Materick Cabin area, they're not there, they never had a lease agreement or anything.
After our meeting, which was like a week ago?
What do you mean, I mentioned after the meeting a week ago? Yes, no, no, after our meeting that we had, then, with the Mater, with her, with, uh, the Mulberry School, the next day after our meeting where Brian Bowie gave, Bo gave public comment, did all that, they had it up on their website that they were at Reading Materick Cabin area, and at that moment, the wheels were in motion, people were talking, everyone was getting.
The Conservation Commission had approved them.
Correct, all the wheels were in motion, everything was good. And then the school committee meeting happened, and then they don't answer them then, or they did, they went to the school committee meeting, which isn't in our purview, but they went to the school committee meeting, that could vote it down three to three, and then, um, Sean put together a memo that is in our packet, that outlined their questions and concerns and wanted, you know, to see what was up. And at the last school committee meeting, which is last Thursday, he addressed the issue that he reached out, did all this, put the email together, and he did not get responded to. So for you to say here that I'm weaponizing things, I'm not giving people the benefit of the doubt, we didn't do this, we didn't do that, Sean did it, Matt did it, and they did it at five thirty today, they had numerous opportunities to change it. And I'm not gonna get into the rigmarole of a caching issue is what they gave for the reason for the change. That is, as I explained before, Karen, I'm a, an IT and security person for the last twelve years, I do numerous websites, the whole caching thing is a clear cash button, it takes five seconds. But other people wanna say it, they're not as experienced as me, perhaps that was true, we'll give them the benefits of the doubt, we gave them multiple chances.
To clarify, we had no purview over this business.
Correct, but they're using, I, they're using our town name, and they could not.
They, oh, listen, Chris, this, I also wanna make clear for the public and for the other board members, that the school committee approval accreditation, which they had decided to get, was not required for them to have approval from the Conservation Commission or to have a working agreement with the Town of Reading. I understand, I understand, I thank you for sharing us, that maybe you thought it was too premature, although it's debatable, we are not in control of Materick Cabin, the Conservation Commission is, and if they didn't have a problem with it, maybe it was fine, and it probably said coming soon, and, but fair enough. But I, I'm gonna ask that you not use our meetings and our agendas as some sort of ridiculous deadline without talking to other board members first.
This agenda topic was in, how would you have liked me to approach this agenda topic beyond what I did?
So I.
I put in Sean's memo, I, I, would you want me and Matt's conversations?
I don't need Sean's memo, we have, it has nothing to do with them.
I agree, but it was going to the point that they were not responding to the Town of Reading.
This is punishing, it is weaponization, yeah, all right.
So, so it's, it's my fault that she did not respond to any of Matt's phone calls.
No purview.
It's my fault that she did not respond to any of Matt's phone calls.
He's not the only business that has not responded to our request to get their act in order, I'm asking you not to use the select board agenda as a weapon.
Uh, I have never used it as a weapon, nor would I would, I, I did not.
Again.
Well.
And the pack in the packet.
In the packet, yes, uh, unfortunately, we can.
The update.
Yes, um, but yes, that's the update, so like I said, it was a moot point, because they removed it at five thirty.
They did take it down, that's what she said, and she apologized, she was sick tonight, and she couldn't make it, she sent an email saying, you know.
And she did reach out in advance.
I, I've been, I, I hadn't heard from her in about a week and a half, and so when I heard it was still on the website, I actually saw her in person in town hall, she came to town hall to get a business license, and I asked her about it, and she said, oh, yeah, I haven't got around to it yet, busy with school, and that's when she told me, I got another location, it's still in Reading, you know, so that's the first time I heard about it, when she showed up at town hall to get her business license. And then I, I still, she was nice enough about it, I asked her a few times, are we gonna change that website? And it still, we were checking, it still wasn't changed, I called her again today, we came, um, said, you know, it's gonna be discussed tonight, are we gonna change it? Because it's not, and so it took a while, but she did the right thing in the end, and, you know, and I'm satisfied, I mean, people get busy, I understand she's busy, so.
And they are at a different location in Reading, which is fantastic in your, in their purview.
Camp Rice, which is a private Girl Scout camp, that she told me that day that she had a lease, um, and that was the first I heard about it, it was a couple days ago.
So, yeah, it's gonna work out good for the Girl Scouts over there, right, and us.
No, in the end, it's fine, and they're still in Reading, I, they, she told me she was gonna respond to, to Sean Brand's email, I don't know that she didn't get around to it, whatever, but I asked her about that specifically, and she said she's taking it seriously, and there will be response coming, whether, I'm not copied on it, maybe it went to Sean directly, I don't know, but I didn't see.
No, within our purview, it's already been changed, we, we don't have to discuss it anymore, unless they come and they want to do more stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, uh, everyone's entitled to their opinion, but if an X-rayed store had their website, it said coming soon to three ninety-four Main Street, and we asked them to take it down, and asked them to take it down, and the public comes, comes here and says, what's going on, what, what's happening, like, or, A, they're not allowed, but it says coming soon. So if you were the chair, you would just do nothing about it?
That actually happened, that actually happened across from Home Goods, used to be Marshall's, I live around the corner.
Okay.
Over the weekend, it opened up, and we could nothing, do nothing about it until it burned down.
Okay, I'm trying to prove a point.
All right, that example.
If someone's using our, if someone's using our address, that's okay, is what you're saying, that's okay.
I, um, I didn't see the website, so, you know, I appreciate hearing about this, if there was a, if he has a genuine concern, okay, I have a concern, I think bringing it up to Matt as concern, fair enough, I might have done the same thing, and I have done the same thing, that, that's, my objection was the putting it on an agenda and asking Matt, her to come in here and explain herself.
We didn't know.
And again, this is my opinion.
Let's make that clear, because, because you just said something that did not happen, I never once told Matt, Jane, or whatever, get her in here, let's get an explanation.
Last week, you actually tell the public, tell Karen to get over here last week while I was at the MBTA Butters meeting, I haven't watched the video yet, did you actually say that?
This isn't on the agenda, but I. This isn't on the agenda, but I.
Right, sorry. Forgive me, forgive me.
Are we really asking this question? Are you in a butter over there? Did you move? Of course not.
You should keep going. Mr. Chair, I, I.
That, that reminds, that reminds me, future agendas, I do have to add something on there relevant to the MBTA Butters meeting. So thank you. I only had two items. Now I'm adding the third one that I forgot about. Thank you.
It'll be fun minutes.
It, it is.
Okay.
Yes, Karen.
So we're not moving to engage in lease amendment discussions until after you discuss who's going to be the liaison? Or are they still allowed to move forward on discussions?
The, the town can do obviously whatever they want.
We have not authorized staff to opt on our behalf in the contract, so no.
I, I disagree. They would, they would put something together and then it's within our purview to say yes or no. And it's within mine and Melissa's purview to actually put it on the agenda. If we don't, guess what? It doesn't happen.
It's almost as clear that you read our policies, you and the town manager together jointly set the agenda, taking in input from all of your board members.
Yes.
There are no keys on this list.
And I take Melissa's input significantly seriously, whatever adjective you want to use. Um, that is how I've been doing it this whole time and that's how I'll continue to do it. Is taking in her input and I've added other items that you want it on the agenda, Karen Rose Gillis wanted it on the agenda. All added into the agenda. I don't know what else you want me to do. Do it. So.
I just don't want to hold them up.
You're not going to hold them up. They are going to still continue working how they've been doing this without us being involved in this.
No, no, we cannot, I mean, no, we, we have a designee.
I, something tells me that Ibrahia is going to disagree with you again, and we'll go from there. So that's where we're at with that. That's obviously not the Mulberry topic, but.
No, that's, I said.
Yes.
Right, so to answer your question, our next meeting is October seventh.
Sorry, we reacted differently.
So October seventh, so depending what happens behind the scenes, depending what happens behind the scenes.
So there shouldn't be anything happening behind the scenes.
Let me finish, please.
I'm horrified that you.
You don't know what I'm going to say. You don't know what I'm going to say. Shut up. You don't know what I'm going to say. I'm speaking. I am speaking. Okay, tell her to be quiet. Why are you talking to me?
I'm talking to everybody.
I had the floor. I had the floor. Now I lost my train of thought, see? Because I got interrupted. Okay. I totally forgot what I was going to say. Okay, it'll come back. Yes. Oh, I was, sorry, I got my.
Alright.
Train of thought.
October seventh.
So our next meeting is October seventh. And I agree with Karen. Shocking that should be, it should be a designee. Okay, if you let me finish, we know you'd have your.
Which Karen do you agree with?
You. You'd have your response. Okay, but you interrupted me as you always do.
That's the point of a point of.
As you always do, okay, fine, as you always do. So I agree with Karen Herrick that we should have a designee as part of the negotiations. So that's not going to happen till October seventh. That's all.
Very good point. When, what is the timeframe for getting this information back to CPDC or anything like that? Like how, how?
I think they meet on the sixth. This is the problem. We moved the meeting from the twenty-third until tonight. This has screwed up multiple things, but it was done for an obviously uh important reason. And this is the end result. Things happen. So obviously we can have a separate side meeting or something like this on Zoom for five minutes uh once we have all five members here. But town staff is going to continue work behind the scenes like they always have. I've never told them to do any of this. Nothing. I've never said, discuss the lease agreement. We have to do this. None of that has ever happened. They've been doing it.
Staff should really come to the select board and say, we'd like to amend the contract. Are you amenable to that? That's what they're doing tonight.
And we, and it was sort of a byproduct of town meeting, all this going to town meeting. And you know, there are things that are within my authority as town manager, like the trash contract tonight.
Correct.
You know, designee on that.
We signed this. This is a contract that we signed.
Yes. Well, you, you can, you, anyway, it, it's, it's the same sort of principle though, I think, you know. So we work on things that are in our pur, purview to work on. Obviously we bring them to the board, we'll ask for a board vote, we'll include the board. But to, to work on things where that we take from town meeting or anywhere else, I, I, we're in our authority to work on things. So that's where, it's not like we didn't, we did anything wrong by working on these things that town meeting wanted us to work on.
When did town meeting ask you to work on parking?
When they approved the project, I mean, that's a byproduct of that. I don't, I don't want to argue about it either, but I'm just saying it's not like.
It would be okay to come to the select board and say, you know, we're going to need to figure out parking. We, town meeting did approve this. But no parking was designed in this project. Uh, we would like to potentially approach Burbank. And that is very common practice for the town manager to come to the select board and say, can I have your approval to, to approach Burbank? That never happened, which is disappointing.
Well, and I don't agree that it should have happened.
That it wasn't done because you weren't trying to do a great job. Okay, I just.
Yeah, no, I, we are trying to, we're trying to get it done as quickly as possible too, because.
But not just quickly, we should be doing it the right way.
No, but we.
We do have to do it the right way, which is a final vote with us, with the five of us, not with one person making the decisions. We've already gone over this. It's the five of us that make the decision. That's it. It doesn't matter what any of the one of us want added, not added into this contract. None of it matters until the five of us vote. That's it. I don't know why this is, has to be any more clear. It just brought up the trash thing. That's two million dollars, a potential forty-three percent increase. And none of us talked to them.
Trash is one hundred percent.
None of us talked to them.
The responsibility of staff.
None of us talked to them.
Report to us that, that what they recommend, and that's exactly what they did.
And if you want to read, if you want to.
Contract.
If you want to read the lease, Karen, it says.
Excuse me?
If you want to read the lease, then you know that the ice arena only has to meet with a member of staff here. Not the select board, not the ice arena authority, nothing. Matt or Jane can meet with Carl McFadden, their designee, and call it a day. They never have to come to here.
Know what you're talking about.
Then read the lease, Karen.
Says they have an operation meeting annually, and we still haven't handled it because you couldn't figure out how to schedule it.
I don't have to figure out how to schedule anything.
Okay, timeout.
Alright, this is the meeting of meetings, ten thirty. So where were we?
Future agendas.
No, liaison reports, Karen, are we skipping this?
No, we're doing, we're doing agendas.
Okay, so we're skipping liaison reports. Okay.
Sorry.
Unless you wanted to.
Alright, allowed. We joked beforehand that we're going to get, not get to this. Anyway, uh, future agenda is kind of pocket four oh eight.
I have nothing. I added mine last night.
Bye bye. So on, may, may I speak?
Yes.
So on the seventh, uh, I'm a couple, a couple of things. So the proclamation for Italian Heritage Month, was there any proposed language that you could send us?
I'll go get it.
Okay, great. That would be awesome. And then regarding the disabilities committee, I mean, Albert's ready to move on it, but I think we, are you going to, Karen, were you going to submit some information on that, about that agenda item?
I'm waiting to hear from, this is something that I know nothing about and I've said that. And I am counting on um staff to say, to do the analysis. Here's what other communities are doing. Here's what we need to do. Do we need town meeting? Yeah, no, this is.
Okay, okay. So in the memo, we'll include that and Albert has a presentation.
So in this, since staff is going to work on something that needs full select board approval, just so we're clear. Because in order to rate the committee, the full select board has to vote on that. Uh, but like, do you not see the, like, I just can't. It's unbelievable. It's not picking, Karen, it's common sense. Right? The next sentence that comes out contradicts the entire prior one. Anyway, so Matt knows what to do on, on this.
Okay, alright, I just wanted to be clear that we weren't waiting for anything from Karen on it, so.
Uh, so my three items were, uh, we got the email regarding the water rate scenario that transpired with that condo complex thing. So we have to see how we ended up voting in the past um on that. We all got the email regarding what's happening over there. So I think that's, that's more to, to put maybe on the, on the next agenda, depending on how. How full it is. Uh, then the MBTA, I know Matt, and we had spoken, you said that their final stop was going to be the select board. It turns out they're going to Conservation on the twenty-fourth, which doesn't square with the final stop in the select board. So we have to find out what's happening with the MBTA.
Reach out to the MBTA and we'll find out. I don't think they were going to go on the twenty-fourth.
I'm just going by what I was told.
Yeah, I think they're going to, I think they were going to move that to October because it's too late to be on that agenda, I think, so.
Well, that's good to hear. So we still technically have time on our next agenda. So if MBTA wanted to come on the sixth, we'll, we'll find out. Intense. Yep. Uh, and then the uh last item is the uh discuss and vote on a social media policy. So that info will be provided in advance in the packet and what we will be discussing and voting on that night.
So wait, a social media policy, what, what's that about?
That will be in the packet and we will discuss and vote on it.
This is another agenda you are unanimous, unanimously putting on our agenda that you're not going to talk to us about. And you'll just tell us to wait until Thursday when the first version comes out. And then we can read the next three versions that come out in the next three days that you send to Matt. And so we can like get hourly updates on our packet.
I'm waiting for Karen Rose Gillis to interject and uh, go ahead, Karen.
I have, I want to ask a question about the water advisory committee. It had nothing to do with your discussion.
Social media policy that.
Yes. Uh, but that's, yes, it'll be in the packet, just like every single item, agenda item, the last, uh, since Reading was incorporated. Uh, you were asked to, to have a water advisory committee. Is that what you're asking?
No, we talked about having a water rate advisor.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Yeah, and so a few, however long ago, it kind of got tabled or, or put off until something was discovered. So I'm trying to bring it back into the conversation.
Right, that's what I thought you said, yeah. That makes sense.
Yeah.
So I think if you can work with Matt on that, what you would envision, how many members or, you know, see what you guys can work out and then present it to us and uh we can see what we can do for it. What the makeup is, composition, five people, you know, that kind of.
I, I have a question about the other water thing that you brought up.
Yep.
I, I know October seventh is several weeks away, but is the agenda item going to be just discuss that one building?
I, I, I would have, I would have to confer with Matt in advance and see how we voted previously to see if what is holding true in the email is actually true or not. And if it has to come back to the board, then it has to. And if it doesn't, then it doesn't.
Sorry, it might not be a.
It might not be an agenda item, but I'm just putting it out there in the ether that there may be an issue with how we had voted on the, on the water rates, which would be good for the water committee that Karen mentioned. Um, just to uh discuss that. Because they sent the email. They put a lot of time and effort into it. We've got to do something about it.
I'm not saying we don't. I just want to make sure that we.
Yeah.
Do it right.
Of course. Any other future agenda items, anyone? Alright, seeing none, we will go to meeting minutes from September ninth, two thousand twenty-five, page four, ten in the. So Maddie, if you want to bring those up, did anyone have any edits? I didn't have anything.
My computer is dead. We need to make sure that it says in there that Chris Haley ordered Karen Herrick to come back from another meeting where she was doing her job and get to this meeting. And I don't know what the quote was because I haven't read it yet. I want to make sure that is in there.
I will eagerly await Karen Rose Gillis interjecting on this. Nothing is happening. Got to be consistent here. Um, I, I did not say that. I asked Matt to find out uh when he would be back. So your generalization of what it was, you should have watched the meeting beforehand to realize what it is, or more importantly, you should have been here.
Stop telling me what to do.
You were elected to be a select board member, not in a butter.
You were elected to be a king.
Great, thank you. I, I appreciate the nomenclature of uh, of, of using that kind of rhetoric because that's gone well.
Yeah.
I have no changes to the minutes. As always, I, I don't, because town staff does a wonderful job.
Karen, motion to improvements?
Unless you have any edits, Karen.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of September ninth, twenty twenty-five.
As amended, as amended.
As protected.
Are they being amended?
Well, I can't see it. Is it, is it, is it referenced in there that Chris Haley in public instructed the town manager to go chase down a select board number and tell her to get over to town hall? And you can, and we can use the precise language you use because several residents told me it was quite unbelievable.
It was unbelievable that you weren't here.
I just want to.
You weren't here. It's my fault you weren't here. There's, I'm not voting on it, so. And I'm not talking to you, so. It's unbelievable.
There was language.
Don't show up and it's my.
If we're caught up, I will go and re-watch the meeting and I will bring, I will send Maddie the exact text. She doesn't need to do it. So we don't have to vote. We don't have to vote on this tonight. That's fine.
I would still like the motion to approve the meeting minutes from September ninth. Or I'll make the motion.
I'm, I'm not making the motion because she doesn't want to approve that.
Well, Karen's decision is just one member out of, out of four.
Not allowed to amend the minutes and thus.
That's, that's not what it is.
Going on so long.
One person is making the change. The full select board should vote.
The change hasn't been.
You decided to skip the minutes and not allow the vote to actually happen. That is one member making the decision for the full board. Once again, you are becoming a hypocrite the sentence after the prior sentence. I'm allowing it to go to the full vote. Yes, Karen.
I move to stay approving the minutes of September ninth until twenty twenty-five, until the next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Two to two, does not carry. Could I have another motion?
Move to approve the meeting minutes once they're amended of September ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, well, spoiler. Uh, any second? Second. Carla, what's the second? All those in favor? Oppose, two to two. One more, one more, Karen.
One more, Karen. You can do it.
Okay.
You can do it.
You don't have to do this. We can, you guys can make all your motions and we can keep doing this. I think we're table on this.
September ninth, twenty twenty-five.
I made an amendment.
And it was already voted on and it did not carry.
No, the amendment was not voted on. When have any of your really, really detailed, specific amendments ever not gotten into the packet, Chris? This is embarrassing.
What do you mean amendments? What, what are you, like, what are you talking about? We're voting on minutes.
But she's asked to have them amended and they should, she should be allowed to amend it.
I agree, but there is a certain way that we've always done it, uh, Karen, in the past on the way that it is. And it's up to the full board to vote on it. It is what it is. Maddie didn't put it in. I didn't tell her, by the way, this really looked bad for Karen, but somehow it looks bad for me. Please don't put this in the minutes for me. What's that?
So can I make an amendment for the minutes?
Of course you can. You have to send it to Maddie in advance typically, otherwise we're debating like this. It's not my fault that Karen's laptop died.
I can amend the minutes.
You can, you can, but typically.
Why are you saying that I have to send them to Maddie?
It's typically what we've done in the past is any edits that you want to make have to be done in advance. We can do them at the time, but as you can tell, when you do them at the time, your laptop could die. So then you don't have the actual minute of what you want it amended in writing. Do you see what I mean? Like, it's beneficial if you send them in advance. I've only sent maybe seven since I've been on the board ever. But, well, you left and somehow that's appropriate.
In all fairness here, you did make, you did make a demand to have her come back and you said that.
I did not make a demand. I said, Matt, can you find out where Karen is? She's supposed to be here. Is she in a butter? That, that's, that's not a demand.
Put that in, go ahead. That's what you said, put that in.
Because you're, you're, you're relying, you're relying on what I just said to actually be what I said.
What did you say?
More likely than not, that is what I said, but.
Motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn.
I don't have it in front of me. How am I supposed to know this?
We have a motion to adjourn and a second.
Bizarro world. Uh, all those in favor?
Thank you, Chair.
Hit the gal, hit the gal.
Hit the gal.